All right, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Soffordin here.
He is, he'll be on his way.
Alderman Ravel. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Soffordin.
All right, welcome, everybody, to the snowy and icy Monday, November 11th, 2019, Evanston City Council meeting. Appreciate everybody coming out on, again, this cold evening. We have all nine Aldermen here. I know Alderman Soffordin was just out there and is on his way in. So we have all nine Aldermen here today. And today, again, is November 11th, so today is Veterans Day. And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge all the veterans here with us this evening. If you've served our country as a member of the military, would you mind standing or raising your hand? Do we have anyone in the room? Thank you for your service, Bob and others. On this day, I inevitably think of the Lumineers song called "Charlie Boy." If you've never heard of it, I'm going to play a piece of it tonight. I'd like you to listen closely to the preamble by Wesley Schultz. And if we can dim the lights in the room, and I'm not sure who this lady is, she's not Wesley Schultz. Apparently, we have to listen to a little commercial for some reason. So as soon as it says skip, let's skip this. sacrifice of our service members and their families, but it also highlights the importance of the words, especially the words of our leaders. The words we use matter. They mattered to Charlie back then, and they matter to us today. While we up here are not sending anyone to war, we are making decisions that affect people's lives and the quality of their lives. The words we use set the tone for the conversations we have and how we treat one another. Let's use our words wisely to try and persuade and inspire others to see our point of view. But let's also realize that after the words have been spoken, we are casting votes and practicing representative democracy, where our elected officials, our Aldermen, are voting on matters this evening and at all city council meetings that they believe are in the best long-term interests of our city. Many have fought and served this country for generations so that we may live in a representative democracy, one where our elected representatives have been empowered to cast votes on our behalf. Next, I'd like to recognize somebody tonight who isn't a government employee per se, but is part of a quasi-government entity that we all rely on every single day, and that's ComEd for our power. We have someone that has served this community for a long time, and that's Carlo Carvalho, who started to support Evanston as its ComEd External Affairs Manager in June of 2015. Since that time, Carlo helped implement broader communications with the city's leadership and staff regarding work being performed by ComEd, as well as expected storms impacted from severe weathers. So whenever we have severe weather, and if you've lived in this community for a long time, it was pretty bad. The power would go out a lot, and that has improved a lot over time, and the relationship with ComEd has improved a lot over time. And a big part of that has been Carlo. And Carlo is being promoted and moved on to a subsidiary there at ComEd. And many of us here at the city wanted to recognize him tonight for his fine service to all of us here, to both the city and the residents. And so there was a special gift of appreciation that we have made for Carlo. So I'd like to ask Dave Stoneback, who's our Public Works Director, who Dave and his team have worked really, really closely, if he would come up here and present this. I'll come down as well, Dave, to Carlo, because this is a really special gift, and I'd like you to explain, and it's a heavy gift, too, there, Dave, all right, to Carlo. And Carlo, if you'd come on up as well.
So this is an original disconnect from the water plant circa 1901 or so. And it's thanking Carlo for the connections that he made between Evanston and ComEd.
So I do want to introduce, I got, so we had a chance to come earlier. For the time being, they're actually going to, someone will replace me on a more permanent basis, but for now, Kalander Davis, who's my coworker these days, my colleague, will be covering. I had the pleasure of interviewing you. I really just, this is too much, but thank you very much. It has been a pleasure working with you over the past five years. So I just, that's it, just wanted to say thank you. I know you've got a packed agenda, so.
Carlo, why don't you stay there just for a second? Alderman Rainey has something.
So Carlo, of all the people in your position that I've worked with, I have never worked with anybody, and this is the honest truth, anybody that was as devoted and as responsive a person as you. I mean, you could contact Carlo at midnight, at four o'clock in the morning, when your fabulous organization shut off our electricity for absolutely no reason. And when there was a reason, if you were the one who notified us, it almost wasn't a problem if you were the one who told us that it was being shut off. So all I can say is good luck in your next position, and your people need to know that you did a fabulous job here. And I don't know anybody who doesn't feel that way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Braithwaite?
I'll be quick and just say thank you as well, just on behalf of Second Ward residents and everyone else that you've helped in our city. I mean, there was never a time that I've reached out to you by way of text or phone call that you didn't respond, particularly when our residents needed comment the most. And then the other thing that you all may know, and I think this is just a personal kudos, he's very supportive of our non-for-profit community.
Absolutely.
I mean, you come on your own, you give your own time and resources, you're not representing ComEd, but just being a great community person, so I'll miss that, and I hope that whoever replaces you is going to look at this tape and understand the huge contributions to our community. So thank you very much for your service. And where are you going?
So I go to work for Exelon.
Okay.
Kind of a water service utility.
Got it.
Support service.
Thank you, thank you.
Staying in the area?
Yes, I'll still be in the area. But I get to cover the, our territory becomes the entire country instead of just Northern Illinois, so.
Thank you, Carlo. And make sure you bring back to your bosses that the next person has big shoes to fill, and the only other request we have is that the person they hire live in Evanston.
Make that happen.
All right, all right.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Carlo.
Thank you, thank you.
It's sort of like when you rent a building, you always want your landlord to live in that building. It's the same thing when it comes to ComEd. You want the ComEd representative to live in your community, so if the power's out, they want to get their power back on quick. All right, two other quick announcements. Next week, we're going to have the November 18th City Council meeting. The agenda's going to be a slightly different one in terms of the order, so I just wanted to give a heads-up to everybody. That meeting's going to start at 6:00. We're going to have a public diversity training with Dr. Tillery from Northwestern. Dr. Alderman Tillery, who worked with us in an executive session, is going to come back. So we're going to have an hour-long training, and then we're going to go into the budget, okay? So then we're going to do the budget. We've been talking about the budget, we'll talk about the budget again this evening. But we're going to have a conversation of the council of the budget, and then we're going to do public comment, okay, at the end of that meeting. So that's how the November 18th meeting will work. And lastly, I'm going to hold a town hall meeting, and it's going to be at Temperance, and it's going to be this Thursday, November 14th, at 7:00 p.m. If you've ever been to one of my town hall meetings, I don't filibuster. I don't sit up there and talk for an hour and a half and then say, oh, are there any questions? I have 15 more minutes. We're going to start right off just with questions, and I'll share with you what I know, I'll tell you if I don't know the answer, and I'll give you my thoughts, just so I know others will give me their thoughts. So that is this Thursday at Temperance and the Second Ward at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. City Manager, any announcements?
No announcements, thank you.
City Clerk?
Yes, a few announcements. I want to acknowledge the receipt of several comments from folks who are not able to attend tonight's council meeting. One is from James Engelmann, who was signed up for public comment. His comments are relating to Agenda Item 810. He supports wood floors being installed in Fleetwood Jordan Center. And then, secondly, we have comments from Debbie Hillman, who makes comments on the Northwestern U2 athletic facilities district. Those comments will be forwarded to the Aldermen. She opposes the text amendment. As well is another comment from Ms. Hillman regarding the Citizens Police Review Commission, and that will be forwarded to the council as well.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. We set aside, by council rules, 45 minutes for public comment, and we take the total number of people divided by 45 minutes, and that's the allotted time. So tonight, we have 30 people that have signed up for public comment, so that means each person will be granted a minute and 30 seconds. Clerk Reed is going to set it at a minute 15, and I'm going to, you know, ask you to wrap up, if you haven't wrapped up, within 15 seconds after that. So let's try to keep it to a minute 30, so we can get to the 45 minutes total, and that's that. So we will go into public comment. Again, public comment's an opportunity for the public to share their perspective on different issues with the council. It's not a dialogue or anything like that. The first speakers we have tonight, we have Carrie Von Hoff, Scott Gingold, and then Harris Miller. So if you just want to sort of line up, we can move through people quickly.
Carrie Von Hoff, I was meant to move to number eight.
You can't speak now, or are you going to speak in like some kind of order?
They moved me down to number eight.
Okay, can you not speak now, though?
I can, if you'd like, sure.
Let's just, let's, oh, I see, yeah, I see what you're saying, Carrie. I get you, for some reason, you're listed twice, yeah.
Can I go in number?
You can go, you can go the second time you're listed, if you'd like. Scott, come on up. So we've got Scott, Harris Miller, then Bruce Ennenbach.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty, and council members, for the opportunity to be heard. I'd like to speak on Agenda Item P1, which I note is on the consent agenda for action tonight with respect to the text amendment on the U2 district. I sent a letter to City Council last week and requested that it be introduced into the record tonight, so I won't repeat all of the points in the letter. I do want to point out, I don't believe that council tonight should give their consent to approve the action of approving the amendment. I have spent the last 10 years on the city's zoning board of appeals. I'm very familiar with the city's zoning ordinance, and every matter the zoning board hears has standards that have to be met in order to approve action or take action. In order for City Council tonight to pass the zoning amendment, standard number one, which is the only one I'll focus on tonight, is that the proposed amendment be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city's comprehensive general plan. The city's comprehensive general plan has a stated policy for council to review zoning standards and parking regulations, to work toward a balance between institutional needs, and that means Northwestern's needs, and the quality of surrounding neighborhoods. And it then states a goal that Evanston should support the growth of these institutions so long as the growth does not have an adverse impact on the residentially-zoned adjacent neighborhoods. I believe in order for City Council to approve the zoning amendment and find that standard is met, that it needs to take further action to build into the text parking restrictions that adequately address the negative impact that the events that this amendment would approve will have on our neighborhood. And I have, in the letter, I've pointed to Wrigley Field as an analog. I believe that there can be resident-only parking that would, in the neighborhood, that would address the problem. And I also believe, in addition to parking, that City Council ought to entertain, as part of the text, a condition on the hours of quote-unquote "operation" for these events, because the hours also, I think, can have a significant negative impact on our neighborhood. So I've given you my, I'm wrapping up. I've given you my letter, and these are a summary of my thoughts, but I believe that City Council ought to work a little further and harder in making the amendment fit the comprehensive general plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Harris, come on up, and then Harris, then we've got Bruce Ennenbach, then Mike Vasilko.
All right. Good evening, Harris Miller, Fourth Ward. Please oppose ordinance 135019. This two-year program will give preferential treatment to Northwestern over Evanston and Willmet residents. Most residents oppose for-profit events at the university because they pay no taxes as nonprofit with no benefit to us and the city. There will be increased congestion and neighborhood changes. Is Northwestern the kid in the city's basement that we must shelter? No. They are a 168-year-old institution with an $11 billion endowment. How gullible is the city government to allow Northwestern to take advantage? If you are involved with Northwestern, please, please recuse yourself from voting. There's no reason for the city's employees and elected officials to receive quid pro quo from Northwestern. Please analyze all citizens' comments from tonight before you decide. What will you do as far as legal accountability with this issue? And finally, please remember our veterans who fought for our country. We would not be here in public comment and debate without them. Thank you.
Thank you, Harris. Bruce, come on up, and then Mike Vasilko, then Carrie Von Hoff.
Bruce Ennenbach, First Ward. I've lived in Evanston for most of my life. I was born in the Evanston Hospital. I lived just a block east of that hospital for 35 years. I now live in the downtown, but I have a lot of friends and acquaintances who live near that stadium. I have lived with Northwestern, trying to get their cake and eat it, too, for 60 years at least. They have properly failed in their efforts, right here in these council chambers, right here, as they have correctly lost their challenges in the courts. And after all of this, here they are, trying again to flout our laws and ordinances. Again, they want their cake and eat it, too. They enjoy tax-exempt status as a nonprofit educational institution, and I support their educational efforts, and I enjoy their presence in our town. But until Northwestern agrees to join the tax-paying entities that it is wanting to emulate here, they should continue to be denied activities which they are, again, inappropriately seeking. The question is, will this council fail in its duty to protect its citizens and enforce our ordinances? If it does fail, it'll cement the legacy of this council, and not in a good way. Please do the right thing, continue to protect and support your constituents, and deny Northwestern its inappropriate reach. And if you don't live in the ward, if your ward is not part of where this stadium exists, think about what your constituents might tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, we've got Mike Vasilko, then Carrie Von Hoff, and then Gary Cull. Welcome, Mike.
I had recommended that you remove the Northwestern item from the agenda tonight because they just have not met their burden. They haven't provided you with the proper materials to make an informed decision. At the last council meeting, Alderman Ruth Simmons and Alderman Rainey both asked for the previous studies, none of which were found. There was no parking study, no traffic study, no impact study, no studies for this zoning change application, and apparently no studies found for the Walsh Ryan Arena building years ago. Do not set an irreversible precedent that any developer in any ward can point to and say Northwestern didn't provide these kinds of studies, we don't have to either. And that's exactly what a good attorney would say, representing a developer. It costs a lot of money to do these studies, and they should be done properly. In a small point department, Northwestern at the last meeting also misled you about the number of parking spaces on their current site. They said there was 1,500 in their presentation, and there's really closer to 1,350 spaces. So this has been a common theme with Northwestern in these presentations. They stretch the truth, or I should say, stretch the mistruth as far as they can. Am I going to run a little long because there's just too much to talk about for this agenda?
Mike, I need you to wrap up in 10 seconds.
Well, I've got a little bit more to say. The budget process deserves a much longer dialogue with citizens that can be provided during citizen comments, a much longer dialogue that can be squeezed into between other important agenda items. Our previous city manager baked the Robert Crown debt interest payments of $2 to $3 million into the budget. In other words, it's a hidden tax that should have been broken out of the budget as a line item because it is a separate tax.
Mike, we need to get to Carrie.
Okay, just one more item. I wrote a message to the council about the city manager search firm. I recommended and request that the city include Bennett Johnson as a citizen participant in the, in the set of members that reviews all of the proposed firms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, Carrie Von Hoff, Gary Cull, and Andy Berman, welcome.
Good evening, Carrie Von Hoff, Seventh Ward, Attorney at Law. Procedure is important. It provides the rules of the road, so those under procedure know what to expect, and provides protection for the less powerful against the more powerful. The procedure for seeking a zoning amendment requires applicants for a zoning change to meet published standards, and applicant has the burden of proving whether the standards are met, specifically that it is consistent with the comprehensive general plan, compatible with the overall character of the existing development, whether the proposed amendment will have an adverse effect on the adjacent properties, and the adequacy of public facilities and services to support the change. These must be proved with actual evidence, not mere assertions or promises. The reason the applicant, like a plaintiff in a lawsuit, presents first is because if it does not meet its burden, the case is over. There's no reason for an opponent to put on a case. If the applicant carries its burden, the opponent is entitled to test the strength of the case by presenting competing evidence, studies, testimony. This is a crucial part of the process that cannot merely be shoehorned into, for example, the public comment portion of city council meeting. Affected individuals have the right to testify as to the effects on them. In this instance, NU has not carried its burden, it has presented no proof that its amendment meets the appropriate standards. The city has failed to follow its procedure by failing to hold Northwestern to that burden. Additionally, it's failed to follow proper procedure by repeated refusal to allow residents to present the case against the amendment by refusing to hear expert testimony in a proper manner and limiting the timeframes for speaking in unreasonable, arbitrary, and capricious manner. This diminishes the rights of the citizens you are charged to serve, erodes trust in our city government, and exposes the city to enhanced judicial scrutiny of the decision on the amendment. I urge you to consider whether the procedure used to reach the decision on this amendment will survive the scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, so we got Gary Cull, Andy Berman, and then Mary Rosinski.
All right, I'm Gary Cull, and I've appeared in front of you more times than I ever would have imagined, and each time I have tried to impress upon you the importance and the impact of legal precedent and how it imports on today's decision. In our court system, precedent provides stability, consistency, and predictability. As someone who listens to lawyers argue both sides of an issue, I am aware that legal precedent offers both guidance and protection to decision-makers in the face of public scrutiny. It is because of this legal principle, our ordinance and standards are lawsuit-proof as we sit here today. They have already been upheld by the Illinois Supreme Court over 50 years ago. Any change in that ordinance will, in fact, create a new precedent, a word that's been used periodically here, and none of you seem to pay any attention to. Because two years from now, when Alderman Rainey says, I will never vote for such and such a, maybe something in Ryan Field, it doesn't matter what happens two years from now, because they will point to the same decision that you make today as precedent for what they should be able to do and expand. They will also have relied on this decision to do things such as build buildings, and that's what I think Mike was talking about when he talked about contractors. Importantly, you also have now given reason for any not-for-profit to approach you and present their pilot program. Pilot program, by the way, is a nonentity in the law. I'm not exactly sure why any of you think that that actually works, because, again, you're changing the law today. Importantly, they can present no standard, not comply with standards, present no studies, present no experts, and present no facts, and I hope you understand that. It's not a matter of what's right or what's wrong, it's the process that they have taken here that they have not done correctly. They've taken advantage of you, they've taken you for granted, and you're going to fall for it.
Thank you, Gary. Andy Berman, Mary Rosinski, then Doreen Price.
Hi, I'm Andy Berman, and since this is Evanston, and there are a minimum of five or six lawyers in every block, we've arranged to have a few of them speak to you. More disturbing to us than the actions of Northwestern, which historically just tries to monetize their property every so often, is how the elected officials and staff of the city of Evanston have denied hundreds of tax-paying, voting citizens any semblance of due process. Over objections presented at a meeting this summer, city staff decided that the proposal was a text rather than a map amendment to the zoning code. It is more than just an arguable case that such a determination is legally erroneous. And no one on the Planning Commission or the council has questioned or addressed the staff's determination. Once this became a fait accompli, the proposal was on a fast track to approval. Notice requirements were minimal, and more crucially, only a simple majority is required to pass this amendment rather than a three-fourths vote were it to be a map amendment. At every stage of this process, the opponents of this proposal were denied due process. As Alderman Wynn so eloquently stated at the meeting two weeks ago, Northwestern was never held to their burden of proof, was never required to bring forth actual evidence that the proposal would not violate the standards of the code. At each stage, the citizens were severely limited in the time they were allowed to present evidence and arguments, creating a farcical scene where speakers had to speed-read statements about a very complex and impactful proposal, and our expert witnesses were unable to fully testify. We sincerely wish that this proposal had gone through a process in a fair and deliberate manner, befitting of an issue potentially damaging effects on our neighborhoods. Since we feel strongly that we have not been afforded an adequate opportunity to be heard, it appears that our only remaining option may be to have a court in the Daly Center give us that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Mary, come on up, and then Doreen Price, then Carl Klein.
I'm Mary Rosinski, and I'm going to say I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's been said eloquently. I don't think any of us should have had to take all of our summer being here when the process was flawed from the day go. It should never have gotten to Planning Commission with a recommendation from staff. The staff should have protected the residents and said, you can go forward with it, but you know what, you got to do, you got to meet your burdens. And they didn't. And then it somehow was shepherded through on a three-four vote, and there again, discussion and standards weren't said necessary to go to P and D. And then it got to P and D with that, with some recommendations, but those recommendations weren't discussed. And then it gets to council, and those recommendations aren't discussed, and as everyone said, there wasn't real ability or representation for your thousands of taxpayers. So that being said, I want to say also that the numbers that have been brought up here, there's been misinformation in different presentations at every opportunity, and it's gone from a 600, I've heard people say they want to vote for this because it's all about the money. Well, it is about the money, but I'm wondering whose money we're protecting, because this started as a $600,000 benefit to the city against millions of dollars in taxpayers that pays to the city, and then it's now down to $200,000. In the budget, it says that we're getting a million four, or a million dollars from the athletic tax, but in the statements, it says that we're getting a million four. And I went back and looked at 2015, 16, and 17, and it's $780,000 and $840,000, or $900,000. We have yet to make a million in our budget, actual budget. So I think we need, and we also did a quick survey, and I know it's got biased, and I'll be done, I will give you a copy of it, but 89.4% said, do you think Northwestern should have to meet the burden of proof of requirements to demonstrate they have met the standards required for the zoning change? And 89.4% said, yes, they do. And the one question which was biased in there, that 82% of the people did know, that are you aware that Northwestern University is a private corporation who owns 240 acres of tax-exempt property and has applied for zoning to allow for commercial events in the U2 district of 40 acres on the sports complex on Central Street? And Northwestern has not met the burden of proof by producing any required impact studies or appraisal studies. So that was one question which was maybe a little bit biased, but it also sets out the stage that none of the chamber studies have come forward. We haven't seen any documentation, and you cannot move forward, you have to do what's right for the people, I hope. Bye.
Thank you, Mary. All right, Doreen, is Doreen here? Let me see, Doreen, okay. Let's move on to Carl Klein, and then it'll be Ray Friedman, then Virginia Man. Oh, Doreen? Oh, Doreen, you're up.
I'm in the process of sending something that'll make you smile, too. It has to do with Veterans Day, Mayor, and I thought of you, and so did Rabby. So I'm sending you something on his behalf and to the council, and so you'll get it within minutes or so. What it has to do is a consideration of what Veterans Day means, as you rightly approached and addressed. And it has to do with protections of all freedoms, especially with regard to the law, fully supporting what Don Wilson has received by memo that I made aware of, of how crucially important it is to do this thing right. When it comes to the law, which I talked to you about earlier, it had to do with something what we thought was independent. All roads keep leading to the law, but the oversight is the most important of all, because the greatest of law not enforced properly is what's causing us the problem. And sometimes the worst of the law is not discovered early enough leads to continual harassment and also mental decline. So with that, all I am saying is that the veterans died for something. I have a very dear friend of mine, who was a veteran of the Cambodian War, and he flew transport jets. And I don't know how many people know about that. A very wonderful guy. And what I'm saying is that you have wonderful people doing wonderful things to help others, and somehow or another, we lost it along the way, including his soul, which is currently challenged right now. We have some really interesting discussions that you might assume would happen. But my heart and his heart are open to division, or what could have been seen as division as something we have in common. So through love, we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen, for that nice message. Carl, I've got you next, unless you guys want to switch. If you're...
Am I on the list? There was some snap. Do you want confusion? I was trying to sign her up, and then I just...
Okay, so come on, you can come on up. Yeah, you can come on up. Just introduce yourself now, and then we'll do you, Carl, okay?
Thanks for that. All right, so Lynn Troutman, Eastwood and Chancellor, again. Mayor Hagerty, I agree words matter. A long time ago, in a very quaint town called Evanston, Northwestern said they wanted to build a stadium in a residential area, but it was okay. It was only collegiate games. It would be fun. But then they decided they want pro sports and pro concerts. Recently, they said they only wanted six events, but then one of those six events was a seven-day event, effectively doubling the impact. Then they said they only wanted six or seven events at the arena, but they were mysteriously opposed to inserting the word "indoor" to protect against events at the stadium. Why? Because it turns out, oh, I guess they actually do want an event at the stadium. Alderman Rennie, hi. You said you would never elect some...
Swear to God on my mother's grave.
I know you do. But you know what you're doing there? You're also defining the definition of a map amendment. That is what that is. It's saying parcels are different. So if that is true, that you would never have an event at the stadium, this is a map amendment, not a text amendment. And map amendments come with protections. Map amendments require, as we've already heard, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm learning fast, map amendments require seven to nine votes from the council. Map amendments also allow citizens to overturn and veto a map amendment if 30% of the people who live within 500 feet of the affected area oppose it. So by ramming this through as a text amendment, you are denying the neighborhood the due process afforded to us by the law.
Thank you, Lynn.
Nope, not done.
You've got 10 seconds. We've got to wrap it up.
I'm extremely disappointed in the way this process has unfolded. I usually let other people, my friends, pay a little closer, but this process, frankly, I find shocking, the way my government works. And I'm more than grateful than ever for the Mary Rosinskys and the Lori Keenans of the world who keep an eye, because that's an important thing to do. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Carl, come on up, and then Carl Klein, Ray Freeman, then Virginia Man.
So neither snow nor rain nor gloom of night stays the citizens assembled tonight from the swift completion of their appointed duty to hold you accountable. Well, here we are in the middle of budget discussions. Let me remind you what the 2020-2021 budget, proposed budget says on page 16. Quote, "The projected 2020-21 budget for the general fund shows a deficit of $2.1 million. It is caused by a loss of $480,000 in revenue to the general fund from the Good Neighbor Fund agreement with Northwestern, which is set to expire in 2020. So first, let's accept that we are facing a budgetary deficit yet again. Yet, then, let's acknowledge that residents don't want to feel nickled and dimed to death with added taxes and fines. Evanstonians pay an average annual property tax bill of more than $8,200. The city of Evanston has the most burdensome property taxes in the state and the seventh highest in the nation. This is according to an analysis of census data done by Jonah Meadows from The Patch." Now, let me remind you that Marty Lyons, the former Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, sent city council on April 18, 2017, a Northwestern University tax-exempt property analysis. This analysis found that Northwestern University should be paying the city of Evanston close to $29 million each year as part of the city portion of the total property levy. The total tax levy for all taxing bodies would be over $200 million. Yes, this was a simple analysis, but it revealed that Northwestern University, the largest landowner in the city, is not contributing an equitable amount through a payment in lieu of taxes. Northwestern University has 237 buildings with a combined 11 million-plus square feet on over 240 acres. Northwestern University has $10.5 billion in endowment, which generates interest annually. The city of Evanston should request Northwestern University to use the proceeds of the interest earned on the endowment to pay the estimated $29 million amount while leaving the principal of the endowment intact. City council should start serious discussion of setting up a legitimate payment in lieu of taxes for Northwestern University. As we know, the university puts numerous burdens on our police, fire, and public works resources.
We need to wrap up, Carl.
Just because Northwestern University, which is really run like a private corporation, has millions of dollars in endowment and has a top-notch legal team, does not mean that the city government should roll over and give them whatever they request. This should not be done, especially when the requested action would adversely affect local residents while the university makes millions of dollars in profit and continues to not pay property taxes.
We've got to get to Ray.
We should not allow Northwestern University to profit off the city and get off scot-free. If this was truly equitable, the city of Evanston would demand Northwestern University to pay their fair share of taxes or contributions in lieu of taxes. Thank you.
Ray, come on up. Then we've got Virginia Man, then we've got Jill Greer. You're up, Ray. That's what I had. I had Ray Freeman, then Virginia Man. Sorry if I messed that up earlier. All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Minute 30, Ray. That's what everybody's got.
Thank you. I'll keep it short. Basically, I agree with everybody that has spoken before me. This reminds me, I'm sorry to say, the Northwestern issue reminds me of dumpster pitner without following the ordinances and the zoning that has been set up for everybody to follow. My comments are short. Our first observation is that we thought the government was created by the people and for the people. That doesn't seem to be the case here in Evanston. Why is it that Evanston residents and businesses are required to follow all codes and ordinances, but Northwestern is not? Especially since we, the homeowners and business owners, are required to pay our property taxes and all city services, police, fire, ambulance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So how much is Northwestern contributing to all city services they are using? With Northwestern having almost $11 billion in endowment fund and charging a whole lot of money to go to college there, we would think the city of Evanston would make sure Northwestern would pay their fair share and not allow Northwestern to sidestep or ignore the zoning guidelines and ordinances that the rest of us tax-paying residents are expected to follow. So our request to city council is please listen to and act on behalf of your constituents that all residents and all businesses that would be negatively impacted by your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you for staying to 1:30. Virginia Man, then Jill Greer, then William Soraki.
Virginia Man, 3004 Normandy. First of all, I've got to say how very troubled I am by the lack of due process for this whole Northwestern issue. Despite repeated requests, the residents have been denied the opportunity to present their position in a thoughtful and intelligent manner, using their attorneys and their expert witnesses. Such a process would have allowed an in-depth discussion, a Q and A back and forth. All of you could have gotten your questions answered. I've heard from Alderman that they weren't clear on some of the materials that the neighbors sent them. And yet, they could have asked that question, had you given us the opportunity to have our expert witnesses, our economists, our attorneys stand up here and rebut the proposal by Northwestern. But that due process was denied, and it's shameful that that should happen, not only today, but anytime here. The mission statement of this city says that it is committed to providing the highest quality of life for all residents. The vision statement goes on to say that creating the most livable city in America is our goal. As residents, we rely on that mission and vision when we move here, when we purchase here, when we stay here. That is a promise that all of you make to all of us. That's a promise that should live on regardless of whether or not some entity in the city will benefit from the process, or whether or not you believe that giving away something to Northwestern is going to increase taxes, or whether or not you think an event held there would be fun to attend. When 2,000 residents and more than 50 businesses come before you and tell you, either by petition, by letters, by emails, by showing up and speaking in the minimal amount of time you allow us, that they are going to be negatively impacted by this decision, it should be a clear no vote.
Thank you.
That is, there is no question on that. Your first obligation, according to the mission statement, is to do no harm to the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Greer, come on up, Jill, then William Soraki, and then Misty Whittenburg.
I'll let you know I practice. It's a minute and 19 seconds. I think I'm good. My name is Jill Greer. As the spouse of a veteran, I'd like to first publicly thank my husband, David, and all military personnel for their service to this country on Veterans Day. With regard to the U2 text amendment, I respectfully ask that at a minimum, the council delay its vote until such time as reasonable solutions for parking, traffic, and safety can be properly analyzed, vetted, and approved. Northwestern and many on this council have argued that adding a few more events to the U2 would not cause an undue burden on the neighbors, perhaps believing we'd been fine with other large events such as basketball games and graduations. I want to be very clear that we are not fine. Even neighbors who are supportive of the use expansion have acknowledged past problems, particularly around parking, traffic, and associated safety issues. We've repeatedly voiced concerns to our public officials, yet this council has failed to enact appropriate remedies, hence the frustration and exasperation you've been hearing from many of us tonight. As an example, a video was shared of an emergency vehicle unable to navigate the 2,700 block of Asbury Avenue because overcrowded basketball street parking made the street impassable. The amendment standards are presumably in place to force the council to identify problems and then prescribe mitigating solutions before voting on the final amendment. As such, I again request a delay of the final vote until this important work is done. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jill. And you're right there at 1:20. William Soraki, good job. All right, well, a minute, 30. Then we've got Misty Whittenburg, then Lori Keenan, then Ken Prosky. Welcome.
My name is Will Soraki. I am a graduate student at Northwestern University, duly enrolled in the Pritzker School of Law and the Kellogg School of Management. Despite this affiliation with Northwestern University, I'm speaking in opposition to the U2 zoning amendment tonight. I know enough from my time at Pritzker School of Law and my prior career as a real estate investor that the burden was on Northwestern to prove that this was a positive amendment for the community. I don't believe they've met that burden. Not only have they not presented enough evidence, even providing the reports requested by this council, some of the data they've provided has been clearly flawed. As an example, they cited a $30 number as the amount of income that would come to Evanston as a result of people coming in. That was conflating revenue with profit. It was $30 that people would spend. It did not take into account the cost that the businesses would be incurring as a result of providing this food or services to these individuals. Separately, the two-year pilot program that they're proposing is flawed in concept. It won't be an actual test. Northwestern will be on their best behavior for two years. They won't have enough time to even bring in the big enough event. And even if they could, there's no guarantee that the people that are running the events today will be here tomorrow. Morton Shapiro will not be running Northwestern University forever, and for that reason, there's no guarantee that it will be correct. And I'd like to conclude by saying that Kellogg aspires to educate brave leaders. I'm asking you all tonight to be brave leaders and say no to Northwestern.
Thank you, Will. All right. Misty Whittenburg, Lori Keenan, Ken Prosky. Minute 30, Misty.
Misty Whittenburg, new topic, ethics ordinance. So you guys, this new one you did, it removes all the language we just added in 2005 to comply with the State Ethics Act, the one that all local government had to adopt and enforce restrictions and penalties for ethical misconduct, no less restrictive than that provided in that state act. For example, you reduced the fine for violations of the Gift Ban Act provisions to $900 below the minimum required by the state. That act also requires violations be treated as ordinance violations, because they are, adjudicated administratively by an ethics board or commission if established, or in the absence that complaints be referred to the city attorney for prosecution, not defense. But who's not allowed to do it is city council. That's 536 of Illinois Municipal Code, which expressly precludes those administrative powers for you to practice. But let's just pretend that this is not illegal. This ordinance makes council the final decision-maker, also somehow its own Board of Appeals and levier fines, but fails to provide any procedure affording parties due process, and specifically removes council's requirement to act impartially, even in ethics cases. That's page 362. This ordinance reassigns the only executive and legislative oversight we have in our government into the hands of those officials. So I will conclude by asking any of you who are supporting this tonight, if you can give us your argument of where in the last five millennia of government it has been a deterrent for ethical misconduct to concentrate power in that way. And I'll provide the rest of my comment in a petition to the appeals, or to the Board of Ethics.
Thank you, Misty. All right. Lori Keenan, Ken Prosky, and then Gordon Kennedy.
Hi, my name is Lori Keenan, and I would like to give a shout out to my son Teddy, who is an officer in the U.S. Coast Guard and grew up on the beaches of Evanston, serving Evanston residents and was inspired to serve our country in that way. There are so many reasons for you tonight not to vote yes to the Northwestern proposal, but primarily, I would say, there are no facts in their application. And while they can't tell us what concerts or events or whatever might happen there, I leave it to you not to apply legislation by imagination. There are no facts. There are no details. They've not shown the burden of proof, as Alderman Wynn said. So many councils before you have fought for the people to the level of the Illinois Supreme Court. So what's different now? Are we going to end up in another costly lawsuit fighting against this? If you allow this, and you should pay, then I agree that Northwestern should pay taxes on the 42 acres, not on a soda or a ticket tax. This is a map that shows the land that Northwestern owns in town, and it's a huge chunk of our property. If they're going to host for-profit events, then they should be paying taxes. So I guess I would say they know what they're doing. They're going to set a precedent. They've done it before. They turned a Virginia Slims private women's tennis tournament into a Bears game. This is not a text amendment. It is a map amendment, and it should require a supermajority vote. We haven't satisfied the burden of proof, as Alderman clearly stated before, and the city of Evanston is currently helping to market Northwestern University on next door, which I think is wrong. In the Wall Street Journal, recently, Northwestern was inflating applications by soliciting students in order to decline their admissions so that their rates went down for admission so that they... so that they appeared more exclusive. We are not about exclusivity in Evanston. We're about inclusivity. That's not who we are.
Thank you. We're past our time.
I understand, but I think if the Lumineers get time at the beginning of the meeting, then the citizens should get time during the meeting. I listened on Town 28 when a representative from Northwestern University said that they built Walsh Ryan Arena with private events in mind. That's wrong. If this is participatory democracy, then listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Ken Prosky, Gordon Kennedy, Margaret Forst.
I'm back.
Welcome, Ken.
I really don't want to be back, but I am. My name's Ken Prosky from the 7th Ward. Today, I am not here to persuade you to support or to oppose, like you've just heard, this text amendment. Instead, I want to make a simple request for all of you. At some point, maybe tonight, maybe not tonight, but at some point, each of you will have an opportunity to comment on why you support it or why you oppose it. And when you do this, my request is that each of you describe why you believe this zoning amendment change either meets or doesn't meet Evanston's standards. I really don't want to hear whether you think this is a two-year trial and we should give it a chance. I don't want to hear that it's something that could be beneficial for Evanston. I don't want to hear that we roll over for Evanston, or we, excuse me, we roll over for Northwestern. None of these reasons are relevant. The relevant currency here is whether the zoning amendment meets Evanston's standards and whether the applicant, which happens to be Northwestern, has met its burden of proof. And by saying I do respect the offices that you hold, the hard work that you do, the decisions that you make, and I'd really like to respect this decision that you're going to make. But for me to do that, please be respectful to us and explain how you think this amendment meets these standards.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Gordon, Gordon Kennedy? Is Gordon here? All right, Margaret, come on up. Margaret Forst, then John Austin, then Christina Frula.
Margaret Forst, 1322 Livingston. If you read the documents in which the city council and the zoning board outline their responsibilities to the city of Evanston, you will see that Northwestern has the burden to prove that there will be no adverse effects to the surrounding residential areas due to congestion, fan behavior, litter, parking, or other infringements. Northwestern has provided little fact-based information to prove that this is true. The surrounding neighborhoods have provided much fact-based information that their stance is not true. Please consider your duty to fulfill the obligations of your mission and vote no to your civic duty and listen to the many voices you have heard tonight against the approval of this amendment and the lack of voices you've heard tonight for the amendment. Postpone this vote until Northwestern, either vote no for this or postpone this vote until Northwestern can argue with facts that the amendment is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Margaret. John Austin, come on up, John, then Christina Frula, then Kate Sullivan.
There have been so many eloquent statements here about the burden of proof. I'm not going to be redundant. I just want to make a plug for the rule of law, especially in this time when we are witnessing every day assaults on the rule of law and a corollary decrease in trust in government. We had, at the last meeting, at least two very eloquent statements about this project, and among the statements were the fact that Northwestern has not met its burden of proof. We've heard that over and over. I just plead with you to abide by the rule of law and stop this because the burden has not been met. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Christina, and then Kate Sullivan, and Nancy Metzger.
Thank you, and good evening. I've lived in the 7th Ward for 29 years, living with the football and living my whole life around it, not being able to get out of my driveway and so forth. And I appreciate having Northwestern. I work for Northwestern. I like Northwestern, et cetera, et cetera. And I strongly, strongly oppose violating our own ordinance, our own zoning ordinance with a lack of due process, with a kind of flouting of the rule of law. In my opinion, we have nothing more precious as citizens of Evanston, of Illinois, of the United States of America than the rule of law. And I think we hardly even realize that we take it for granted so much. So the things my eloquent neighbors have said about the violation of due process, the silencing of real debate about this, the fact that we've got thousands of residents saying we don't want this, the fact that our residents' quality of life is supposed to be a priority over the corporations' for-profit activities in our neighborhood. You have an impact study in your packet, our packet, that shows in the Big Ten scenarios, Northwestern's situation is very different. Many more single-family homes, many more, a much worse situation with parking, with traffic, with everything. Just look at those pictures and you will see. So I also want to say, there don't seem to be any provisions for experimenting with your neighbors, giving them a two-year experimental horrible quality of life to see whether or not the camel's nose under the tent is going to work out or not. That's not, that's not due process. We'll experiment for two years. And finally, I just want to say, we're in a period where we're always being asked our opinion. You're not being asked your opinion. You're being asked to uphold our common law, instituting our rights, all of us, no matter where we live in Evanston, same rule of law. You represent all of us. If we were in other, switched places, we would be representing your interests. You have to do your job and uphold the law as we are all begging you to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine. Kate Sullivan, come on up, Kate. Nancy Metzger, and then Alex Turek is next.
Hi, thanks for listening to all of us tonight. I'm not a lawyer or an analyst. I think everyone has been very eloquent, and their arguments were just sort of opinions on this. I would say I'm in full agreement on the opposition to this. I am a resident of the 7th Ward. Hi, I'm a resident. I just can speak from experience. I've lived there for seven years. My husband grew up in Evanston. We chose to live here out of any place in the world. We live right across from the 12th Hole. I can say that we are fully invested into making Evanston grow, welcoming Northwestern. I think that that's great. We did sign up for living right next to the stadium and living with the games. I think going beyond that makes life a little unlivable for us. During the games, we make sort of concessions, and to not leave the house, we either will leave the area or stay in because it's just not designed for that much traffic. We really are, like, an area of one-way streets, no parking. You know, it's a little difficult, so I have to say that. And with the up of tailgating, which we said that wouldn't happen on the 12th Hole, we have drunken people in our yards. We have constant, even though there's been barricades put up, we still have cars zipping down our little cul-de-sac street, and people throwing trash out, and basically urinating in our bushes. So we have taken pictures and reported it, and I know we've written letters to all of you. I just have taken into consideration that the escalation just kind of destroys the way of life in our neighborhood, and we really wish to protect it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Let's see, Nancy, Nancy Metzger, Alex Turek, and then Dave Davis. And then after that, we have three more speakers, and we'll be done.
I live far away from here in the northwest part of Evanston, so I can't discuss how it's, you know, events like these impact my life. But what does, you know, my reason for being here was really, I came for another meeting and it was canceled. And then I heard what was going on, and I've seen the signs, and it's, and it, they really hit me in the gut. You know, $11 billion in endowment fund is astounding. And, you know, and you're not the only university that has endowment funds like that. And it's, there's something really wrong about it, you know, charging the tuition that's charged and basically ruining children's lives, students' lives, you know, when they're saddled with debt. So I'm just asking you to take that into consideration. And I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you. Alex Turek, come on up, Alex, then Dave Davis, then Mike Poliscky.
Hi, guys. Thank you for having me over here. I think my theme is not about Northwestern, but it's about taxes in general. Specifically, I'll talk about it. So I'm the 2nd Ward. I'm an immigrant from Ukraine. I chose to start my business here, buy a house in this town, and raise three kids here. All of my kids were born in Evanston Hospital. I love this city very much, but recent developments made me reconsider both living here and running my business in Evanston. Specifically, I'm talking about the self-storage tax that you're about to introduce, but I think it fits well with the theme of taxes and fees and nickel and dimon as to death here. So I own self-storage on 2020 Greenwood, and it's run by Extra Space. Most of our tenants are low-income, some are students, some are elderly. And they will be disproportionately affected by this tax. So this tax will be affecting people who live in smaller units, minorities, elderly, students. This tax, in addition to other taxes that we just heard about in this city, will be passed directly to the consumer. If you think that business will end up paying for this, it's wrong. It's going to be passed to people with, you know, low incomes, elderly, and immigrants. So what I want to finish here is that the rich and the middle class aren't going to be affected by this. For them, $10, $20 increase is not a big thing. But for people of lower income, it's a small thing. So I just want to end here that what's happening here, I've been listening to this, so what's happening here reminds me of a little bit of a Soviet Union bureaucracy from which my parents escaped 25 years ago, unaccountable, and basically, you're hurting the people that you sworn to protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. All right, Dave Davis, Mike Poliscky, Elliot Zation, and then Timothy Gaiman will be last.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, Clerk Reed, city staff. My name is Dave Davis. Again, I'm the Executive Director for Neighborhood and Community Relations at Northwestern University. I'm here to speak in support of Northwestern's zoning amendment ordinance number 135019. This pilot project simply will allow the university to host different types of events in the U-2 district. The events will be limited to 7,000 attendees indoor, 3,000 attendees outdoor, and capped at 13 days, 13 days each year. That's it. These special events are not comparable to football games, where we typically have 40,000 attendees, and they would be consistent with the types of events that are already taking place in the U-2 district. For example, we already host sporting events in our athletic facility. This proposal would allow Northwestern to host professional sporting events such as world team tennis. Our students already host concerts at Walsh Ryan Arena. This proposal would allow the university to host for-profit concerts similar to the out-of-space concerts at Canal Shores. Additionally, we included a number of provisions to increase transparency and protect our residents from any negative impacts of special events. That's it. That's what our proposal does. Here's what our pilot proposal does not do. Our pilot proposal does not modify any facilities in the U-2 district. There will be no construction, no changes to any structures, no renovations, no change in services as part of this proposal. Our pilot project does not cost the city of Evanston anything, not one dime. We're not asking the city to finance construction of any new facilities. We're not asking for public subsidies, and we're not asking the city to cover the costs for police officers, firefighters, or other emergency personnels that would work at these special events. And most importantly, our proposal does not set an unwisest precedent. Our proposal, our amendment includes a firm expiration date when the zoning amendment change will be repealed. Our proposal cannot be extended unless we prove to the city and our neighbors that we have earned the right to submit a new application and go through this wonderful process all over again. The benefits of our proposal are also very clear. These limited, small-scale events will provide Evanston residents with another excellent entertainment option and generate new revenues for, yes, Northwestern University and the city of Evanston.
Dave, I got to have you wrap up.
Okay. Therefore, given the limited scope of this proposal and the potential benefits written into the ordinance, I respectfully request your support. Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Mike Poliscky, Elliot Zation, then Timothy Gaiman.
Could you clarify why Northwestern gets extended?
I'm sorry, I forgot to set the timer. And, no, I certainly have no.
There are plenty of other people that spoke against it that got extra time, so let's move on. Mike, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Mike Poliscky. I'm the Deputy Athletic Director at Northwestern. We know this pilot project has provoked significant emotions, especially from our Evanston neighbors who live nearby our athletic venues. We are sorry, as that never was our intent. The final details of our pilot project, approved by the Independent Planning Commission, were crafted intentionally and specifically. We presented, discussed, and answered questions before our neighbors three times. We also met several times with city staff and Alderman Ravell. Most of all, we listened, a lot. We heard the concerns, pivoted immediately, and modified our request. We proposed a reduction in both total events and capacity. In order to alleviate parking congestion within the neighborhood, we committed to supplying more than 2,000 free parking spaces adjacent to our venue and on campus. We have 1,500 parking spaces adjacent to our campus, including the North Grass Lot, Gate M, Gate V. And most importantly, we recommended the sunset provision. Our transparent goal is to generate revenue for the city, its business community, and our athletic department in a responsible manner. Please give us the chance to prove ourselves and help one another. We will do this the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Elliot, come on up, and then we got Timothy Gaiman is last.
Elliot Zation, 9th Ward. I'm addressing my remarks to the members of the council, but to all the people who are listening tonight, either in the audience here or on TV. Many odd controversial issues have been coming before the council, that's pretty obvious, tonight, and some of them don't seem to get resolved, and others get resolved in a way that doesn't satisfy a lot of residents. So a number of residents have been circulating a petition to put a referendum on the spring election ballot, a measure to create a process whereby registered voters can, via petition and referendum, propose ordinances or policy measures to the voters of Evanston. And these will, if passed by a majority, will require a mandatory consideration by the council. As most people know, the Harley Clark referendum, the referendum to save the Harley Clark Mansion was advisory. The council listened to the approximately 80% vote for the referendum, but they were not compelled by this referendum to take the action that voters wanted. If you believe in citizen initiative on major issues, and there are certainly many, you can sign our petition tonight or in the near future. We welcome your support. If you want more information about this initiative, go to evansinvoterinitiative.org. And if you come to the mayor's town hall on Thursday, Temperance will be there, and you can sign our petition. The mayor spoke about representative government. That's what you are. You're elected to represent us, but this is another way in which citizens can be involved in the making of policy rather than just putting their opinions out here tonight and in other meetings of this body. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. All right. Timothy, you're going to wrap it up for us tonight. Minute 30.
I sent you all a letter this weekend. I sent an attachment which has my economic testimony. I testified in 1996. At that time, I knew everyone read it because they asked me a lot of questions during testimony. I don't know whether any of you have read my document. I hope you do, and I'll tell you why. Burden of proof. I understand now why Northwestern will never meet this burden of proof because they, Mr. Davis thinks there are zero costs. It won't cost a dime to this city to have this passed. That is arguably, let me just say it another way. That is demonstrably false. There's a vast economic literature that describes all kinds of costs associated with professional sports and commercial venues in neighborhoods. Please read my report. I would appreciate it. I want to set the record straight. Roger Sosa, Chamber of Commerce, two weeks ago, said that property value, property taxes, property values will go up in the neighborhood. And he's based it on a study from National Realtors Association. He was kind enough to point me to the study. That study is not appropriate to be used to say that property taxes, property values will go up. They will go down. The study he used was simply a list of 20 venues where that occurred in the entire country. There are thousands of venues that weren't included in the study, not even a sample of them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Timothy. Thank you for wrapping it up for us. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking so eloquently and passionately on the issues of the day. Two big items on the agenda. We have a bunch.
I was on the list to speak to.
Come on up, Evie. Minute 30. You're closing it up.
This is not the first time that I've been omitted from speaking. Okay, so, Davis compared concerts. The concerts that we, that you've had at Walsh Ryan Arena is a 1,700 The concerts that you've had at Welsh Shrine Arena is 1,700 people. The concerted space at what, 2,000, maybe 3,000 people? These will be 7,000 people. Big difference. Regarding construction, well, you did have the construction. In 2017, you had the Welsh Shrine Arena. Did you conduct any traffic studies or any parking studies? No. Regarding no cost to the city, the city just incurred costs during the football game when I called them to give tickets to people parked illegally on my block. And that was a city cost, not Northwestern. So, another thing. You said a lot of things that the planning and development commissions were blatantly false, and they will be all published because I am describing every single word you're saying, and I'm publishing it. So you said to me in person, Dave Davis, "We don't bring concerts, student concerts, student-sponsored concerts, because we cannot make any money on them." That's the reason, not because you did not have the facilities before Welsh Shrine Arena. You did have the facilities. Bob Dylan did come to Magar Hall, so you did have the facilities for student-sponsored concerts. But you cannot make money, and that's the whole issue. You're making money. Now, I will quote Adolf Huxley, "What I may call the messages of a brand-new world, but is it possible to make people contented with their servitude?" I think this can be done. I think it has been done in the past. I think it could be done even more effectively now because you can provide them with bread and circuses, and you can provide them with endless amounts of distractions. And regarding Welsh Shrine Arena, "What Sphinx of cement and aluminum bashed upon their skulls and ate up their brains and imagination?" This is from Allen Ginsberg's Howl.
Thank you, Evie. All right. We're now going to move on to the agenda. I'm going to ask. All right. I'm going to ask Alderman Braithwaite, if you'll start to take us through. Let's do the consent agenda first, and then we're going to come up and do special orders of business next. If you could start with the minutes, Alderman.
Okay. I'd like to move, where are we, minutes? Consent, staff recommends the approval of the minutes, the regular city council meeting from October 28th. Item A1 is approval of the city council payrolls, October 14 through October 27, in dollar amount of $2,834,639.74. And for November 12, 2019, in dollar amount of $3,014,798.95. And the credit card activity for the period ending September 26, in the dollar amount of $175,489.92. For action, approval of the BMO.
Remove that, please.
Yep. That's removed. Item A3 is approval of the 2019-2020 snow towing operations contracts. The dollar amount should not exceed 60,000. I'd like to move item A4, which is the approval of 2019 parking program. Staff recommends city council approval of holiday parking validation program for paid parking sessions for the Park Evanston app beginning November 30 through January 4. It's also for action. Item A5 is sole-source purchase of the Dell Video Archive Storage Array expansion chassis for Robert Crown Community Center and the library, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $39,613. That's also for action. Item A6 is a prequalification for contractors for cured-in-place CIPP rehabilitation sewer mains, and that, staff recommends city council follow-in conscious prequalified sewer for the next three-year period. There's no dollar amount. Item A7 is a sole-source contract with Dual Tem Clogger for ice refrigeration maintenance service in the Robert Crown Community Center and Ice Complex and Library, and that's in dollar amount of $44,223.36. Also for action is item A8 is a sole-source contract with Ford Space for miscellaneous fixtures and equipment, Purchase B, at the Robert Crown Community Center, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $93,496.22. That's for action. Item A9 is Change Order Number 2 for 2019 structure lining, bid number 19-15. Item A10 is also for action is Change Order Number 2, the contract with Bodala LLC, DBA Central Rug Carpet for the Fleetwood Jordan Interiors renovation, and that's in dollar amount of $13,224. The Resolution 86-R-19 approving the outside council litigation procedures and billing guidelines. That's also for action. Item A12 is Resolution.
Was held in committee.
Got it? Item A13, Resolution.
Hold on, please.
Twelve. A12 was held in committee.
Was held.
On A13, I'm pulling off.
Off the request of Alderman Fleming.
Would you take A14?
Yes. Item 14 is off at the request of Alderman Fisk.
Could you please take A15, 16, and 17 off also?
Yes. Alderman, the request of Alderman Suffern, item A15, A16, and A17 is also off. Item A18 is Ordinance 142-0-19 amending the City Code Section 7-12-17. City Walker Works System changes the rates and fees and penalties. Staff recommends city council adoption of this ordinance, amending the 7-12-17 charging rates, penalties increasing the water meter charges rates by 5.4%. This increase has a corresponding decrease to the sewer rate and is cost-neutral for Evanston residents, and that's for introduction. Item A19 is Ordinance 143-0-19 amending the City Code Section 7-13-3, decreasing the sewer rates. Staff recommends the city adoption of this ordinance, amending the City Code Section 7-13-3, reducing the sewer user rate by 4.46 from 3.39 to 3.2 per billing unit. Also for introduction is Ordinance 145-0-19 amending various sections of Title 10, Chapter 11, motor vehicles' traffic pertaining to parking on Simpson Street. That is for introduction. Item A12 is also for introduction, excuse me, 21. Ordinance 152-0-19, amending portions of the City Code following the enactment of the city, excuse me, the Illinois Cannabis Regulation Tax to address possession of recreational marijuana and associated paraphernalia. That's also for introduction. Item A22 is Ordinance 141-0-19 authorizing the city manager to execute a lease of city-owned rea-
That's off.
Right. Or we just, I'll just read it for introduction?
Well, okay, that's okay. Yeah, that's okay.
So, item A22.
I'm sorry, A22.
Right. So item A22 in committee, it was amended for introduction. So Ordinance 141-0-19 authorizing the city manager to execute a lease of city-owned real property at 633 Howard Street with 633 Outpost LLC doing business as Astrachon is for introduction. Item A23 is Ordinance 20-0-19 amending Title 1, Chapter 10.
Can you pull that off, please?
Yes, I will. Item A23 is off at the request of Alderman Fleming. Item A24 is Ordinance 98-0-19, amending the City Code Title 3, Chapter 31, regarding the regulation of collection boxes. Staff is recommending this is for action, city council adoption of this ordinance, amending the 31 to Title 3, Evanston City Code regulating collection boxes, which provides clear guidance as a size, location, restrictions, blah, blah, blah. Department to make, the Director of Health and Human Services to make administrative decisions in conformance with the code and regulation of collection boxes. That is for action this evening. Item A25 is Ordinance 129-0-19 amending the City Code Section 1-17-1, purchase of goods and services. Staff recommends the city council adoption of this ordinance, amending the City Code Section 1-17-1, purchase of goods and services. This ordinance will allow current purchasing limit threshold raised from 20,000 to 25,000, and that is for action this evening. Item A26 is-
Pull that, please. Overruled. Thank you.
Item 26 is held at the request of Alderman Suffern.
Is, right, is off the agenda.
Is off.
Okay. All right.
And that concludes the consent agenda.
Administration and Public Works. Thank you. Alderman Ru Simmons, could you go through the consent agenda for planning and development?
Yes. P1, okay. P1 is removed by Alderman Revelle, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Wen, could you take us through economic development?
Please pull item ED1.
Yes. This is the consent agenda for Economic Development Committee. ED1 is Ordinance 125019, amending portions.
Okay, so that's going to be, yeah.
It's the only one on there.
Okay.
All right. So that's ED1 is off. Okay, and Alderman Fisk, could you take us through human services? Can you also do appointment, reappointment?
Sure. Ordinance 79019.
I'd like that one off, please.
Off, okay. And then the appointments are for reappointment to the Arts Council, Beth Adler. That's for action.
All right. Is there a second on the consent agenda? All right. I'm sorry, I missed it. Do we have any items here where we need to do a vote because they were for introduction and? Okay. So, all right. So consent agenda was seconded, seeing no discussion. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffern.
Aye.
Braithwaite moved it. Who, just for the records, I missed who seconded. Braithwaite moved it.
Second.
And, oh, Robin seconded. Okay. All right. So the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine-to-zero, nine-to-zero vote. We're now going to move to the items that were removed. Alderman Braithwaite, if you could take us to A2.
Item A2 is approval of BMO Harris Credit Card Activity, ending September 26 in the dollar amount of $4,729.44. That's for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the roll on A2, please?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffern.
Aye.
Abstaining.
All right. So A2, approval of the Amazon Credit Card Activity passes the city council on a eight-to-zero vote with Alderman Suffern in abstaining. Could you take us to A13?
A12.
A12, excuse me.
Oh, no, that was held over. Correct. A13 is Resolution Number 121-R-19 authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with the Motivation International Link for DIBI Bike Program. That's for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is open for discussion. Alderman Fleming.
I just pulled it because I'm voting no. I have a, I would like us to do more work with our bike line and bike infrastructure before we put more bikes on the street.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none.
Item A14.
This is a, this is a resolution. We can do a voice vote on A13. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. A13 passes on an eight-to-one vote. Okay, can you take us to A14, Alderman?
Yes. Item A14 is Resolution 123-R-19, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a lease agreement with Illinois State Representative Robin Gabel for the office space at the Civic Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked for this to come off because I admire Representative Gabel, but traditionally, we have rented to not-for-profit or nonpartisan space in the Civic Center. So I'm wondering if it's possible, Corporation Council, to have the lease reflect that we will be leasing to the position and not to the political party or the individual? Does that make sense to you guys?
In other words, it's not a campaign office, right?
It's not a campaign office.
I want to make sure that's clear, I think.
We can do that.
Okay. In that case, I'm supportive.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other discussion? Okay. All right. So seeing none, this is a resolution. Selina, voice vote. All in favor of A14?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, A14 passes city council on a nine-to-zero vote. Can you take us to A15, Alderman?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move item A15, Ordinance 117-0-19, approving the First Amendment Tax Increment Redevelopment Plan and Project for the Howard and Ridge Redevelopment Area. This is for introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's open for discussion. Alderman Suffern.
Sure. I just want to vote no on A15, A16, and A17, so we could run them all as one thing, and I can just vote no, and we can keep the meeting moving.
Then I'll move all three. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move.
Can I interject? Can we get a separate vote on each of these?
Separate?
Sorry, slow everything down. Just want to vote no. That's all.
That's okay. All right. So seeing no more discussion on A15, can you, City Clerk, take the roll, please?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffern.
No.
All right. So A15, Ordinance 117-0-19, passes the Evanston City Council on a seven-to-two vote. Alderman Braithwaite, could you introduce A16?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to introduce item A16, Ordinance 118-0-19, designating the First Amendment Howard and Ridge Redevelopment Project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. This is for intro.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk, could you take the roll on A16?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffern.
No.
All right. So A17, Ordinance 119-0-19, passes the Evanston City Council on a seven-to-two vote with Alderman Suffern in abstaining. Could you take us to A18?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move item A17, Ordinance 119-0-19, adopting tax increment allocation financing for the first amended Howard and Ridge Redevelopment
County was present, District 65 was present, and District 202 was present, and all three of those taxing bodies highly recommended the extension of this tip. So I just want the rest of the council and the community to know that this, this is a recommended tip. So I'm not sure why my colleagues, two colleagues, are not supporting this, but I'd be interested in hearing, maybe before the next meeting, what the reason is. So, thank you for those of you who are supporting. I just wanted to get that in before we made the last vote.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman. All right, seeing no more, seeing no more lights, A17 was moved and seconded. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming? Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
No.
All right, A17, ordinance 119-0-19, passes for introduction on the seven to two vote. Alderman Braithwaite, could you move to A23?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to move item A23, ordinance 20-19, amending the Title I, Chapter 10, City of Evanston's Code of Ethics and Board of Ethics. The members of the Ethics Subcommittee recommended the adoption of ordinance 20-0-19, amending the City Code Title I, Chapter 10, City of Evanston's Code of Ethics and Board of Ethics and the Board of Ethics Rules. This is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I pulled this off. So I had these same, I think, concerns whenever we talked about this last, which was there were a few recommendations, I think made by the Board of Ethics, the current sitting Ethics Board, that I thought we should maybe look at and we didn't, which was fine, but that's why I pulled it off, I was gonna vote no to it. Now, after Ms. Wittenberg spoke, she sent an email with some language from the state bar or some such organization.
Attorney General's Office.
Thank you. That, you know, sitting up here, I did just kinda breeze through. I am going to make the huge assumption that our legal counsel already looked through those and we are in compliance. The one thing that stuck out to me, without having, you know, the time to go through every word in detail, was some language regarding the, let me see, I'm sorry, I wanna use the right language. It was the role that Hugh plays, I think, so the, what's that role that he plays in the Ethics Board? The.
Staff.
Oh, sorry, he's staff, okay. So anyway, there was something to hear about the person who was the hearing officer, I think maybe was the language, could not also.
Special Counsel.
Yes, yes, so I just wanted, that was one thing that stuck out to me. Again, I'm not as well-versed in the Ethics Board, I have not been there, but I was going to, I had my time probably coming, which, I mean, hey, it's just what we have, right? So my, my issue was that we, there was a couple of things that, I think, a fine of 750 that the Ethics Board recommended, and I do understand from the citizen's point of view, if you are taking out and, or putting in, or whatever it's called, an ethics claim against someone on City Council, that, that then needs to come back to City Council for approval. I can understand how people might think that that is maybe not the best checks and balances.
Thank, thank you. Okay, Alderman Wen? And then Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, in reviewing the ordinance, which I think is so much clearer than what we currently have, I really appreciate all the work of the committee, I realized that, that there is no indication in the ordinance that a simple majority of the Board of Ethics is sufficient to find that someone, one of the, that someone has violated the, this ethics code. So I would like to propose that language be inserted into the ordinance saying, indicating that it's a simple majority, or if the council would like to discuss whether it should be a supermajority of the Board of Ethics that determines that there has been an ethics violation.
I think simple majority makes sense.
I mean, I think it should, I think it should say, the, the ordinance is very clear in so many other aspects of this, of the procedure that, that, that should be followed, and that, all of the terms, but I do think that in this, I mean, someone can make that assumption, but while we're drafting the ordinance, to make everything so much clearer, I think that we should have no assumptions left in it, but make it very clear that it's a simple majority, if that's what the, the council would like, but, so I would like to. I would.
Do you wanna move that amendment?
We insert language into this, into the ordinance, indicating that, that a simple majority of the Board of Ethics would, is, is all that's necessary.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that amendment? All.
So for clarity, that would be added, I think the best place is 11014D, so it currently reads, "The hearing shall be led by the Board of Ethics Chair and include a review of all relevant documents and records," and the next section talks about its opinion, so we will insert a portion regarding the vote needed on the issue presented.
Yes, thank you.
Do I need, do I need to take a vote on, oh, yeah, and because it's an amendment, though, that's attached to an ordinance, can I do a voice vote? All right, all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment passes nine to zero, now we'll see if the ordinance does, we still have some folks that wanna talk about the ordinance. Alderman Wen, were you done?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. And so it's been, what is it, I guess a couple of weeks since we were here last, so a number of points have been brought up from a number of people, which I appreciate. I'm gonna kinda run through some things, but after I do that, what I'm gonna suggest is, I think it's only fair to both our audience and to my council members, to get a further revised red-line version that incorporates some of this stuff, because, you know, it seems like a lot of little changes, but some of them are somewhat significant. Just to highlight a few points, we would like to include adoption or, by reference of the state laws that are applicable, so to include that in our ordinance, to adopt those by reference. In addition, the, the way it's drafted now sends the, sends the issue to the City Council, and the City Council is supposed to be a legislative body as opposed to an adjudicative body. So I think with our council's advice, I didn't think of it on my own, but we should change that to the Rules Committee, so that Rules Committee would be able to take on that role, whereas it probably is not appropriate for the council to do that. In addition, we should probably have a provision that, that allows the special counsel to refer final finding if there is, are particular violations to the Cook County State's Attorney's Office, that's provided for by state law, but we should have that in there as well so that there is clear direction to the special counsel on how that is to be attended to. Let's see. We ought to add a timeframe within which the respondent gets notice of the complaint, so it doesn't sit for a period of time. I'd suggest seven days. Same as the complainant, right? The, of the gift ban, there's an additional subset provision that precludes food and refreshments to not exceed $75. We had just a blanket $100, but you can't eat $100 worth of food, you can only eat $75 worth of food. But, so, to break that out, so that the limit on the food and refreshments do not exceed $75. And Alderman Revelle had raised the point about the appearances, and I wanna get that language in front of everyone. So those are the points that I think, highlight points that I think need to be, ought to be addressed, and if anybody had further points, otherwise I would move that we hold the matter until the next meeting, which I think is the 18th.
Alderman Fisk, and then Alderman Wen?
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. The, what I am concerned about is, there are five members on the Ethics Board and not, there's not always a full complement of members present, and I'm a little bit concerned about, I would like everyone to participate in votes, whether they're there or not, I think, holding a vote over and having it reviewed by the absent members, so that we don't end up, a majority of a quorum would be three, and two people could pass it out of the five members of the board. Am I correct?
No.
I'm not, okay. Tell me, tell me how I'm not correct about that.
It has to be a majority of the board, a simple majority of the board.
Okay, so it's not a majority of the quorum?
Right.
Okay, and as long as it says that.
It will, that was a, that was a point.
Yeah, okay, then I'm, then I'm fine with that, but I would, I would really prefer, since there are so few members and these are really important issues, that the entire board opine on it, and, and we need to make, make sure that recusals are warranted.
Thank you. Alderman Wen?
Two other items that were added in were on, in terms of the conduct of the hearings, that, that, the procedure that happens at the conduct of, at the hearings, after closing remarks of, if requested by either party, there is also the deliberation of the Board of Ethics and a vote by the Board of Ethics in open session, and I ask that those things be added to make it very clear what the process would be, and Corporation Council agreed with that. That, that is what would happen, but I think it's important to actually spell it out.
Right, and that's, that would be in the proposed revised draft. It's, it's intuitive and obvious, but it's better to have it clearly set out, right? Yeah, yeah, we don't wanna rely on intuition.
Anything else? Okay.
Okay, so that'll move that we hold it until the next meeting, which is at the 18th?
The next meeting is the 18th, but I would request the 25th, I think we're gonna need a little more time than just a couple days before the pack goes out.
Okay, I move that we hold it until the 25th.
Well, table, I'd hold. Just for technical.
It can be, it can be held, the next regular meeting is the 25th.
Oh, I apologize, I thought the next regular meeting was the 18th.
18th is a special meeting, 15th is a regular meeting, right?
Did you table it as special? It's a regular City Council meeting. Oh, okay, then you should table it, too.
Okay, all right, so good, we got the terminology down, we are table. I move that we table it until the 25th, November 25th.
Second.
Okay, to make the changes that we, that you discussed up here.
Right.
Okay.
So, vote on the table.
Okay, all in favor of tableing it, to make the changes? Okay, any opposed? All right, all right, that motion has agreed upon nine to zero, we're tabling it to make the changes as discussed up here. Okay, now we're moving to A26. Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to move item A26, which is ordinance 144-r-19, approving the authorization of the insurance and sale not to exceed of Series 2019A and Series 2019B, Caravalli Montessori School of Evs, of the City of Evanston, Illinois, for the benefit of Caravalli Montessori School, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond loan agreement and other documents related thereto, authorizing the sale of said bonds to the Fifth Third Bank, approving the Tefra hearing of Caravalli Conduct Financing. Staff recommends City Council adoption of this ordinance, approving the assurance not to exceed $3,925,000 aggregate principal amount of revenue bond Series 2019A, and, oh, got it, makes sense. The city will not incur any liability to repay this debt in the event of default by Caravalli Montessori School. This is for action.
All right, this is open for discussion?
Who took it, oh, this is all.
Okay, this was taken up, but I may just spend a vote now or something? Okay, Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I just have a question, I know we had a long conversation last time about this, and if there were any fees or such we can charge, just wanna confirm that when I read the packet, there was nothing that changed from introduction? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, no fees have been added to this A26 one, and that was a point that the council wanted to discuss, and the city manager's office is gonna look into that.
Okay, thank you.
To discuss in future. Okay, all right, City Clerk, this has been moved and seconded, could you take the roll on A26?
Yes. Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson? Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
No.
All right, A26, the ordinance 144-0-19, passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to two vote, so thank you. Alderman Rue Simmons, could you take us and introduce P1?
Yes. P1, ordinance 135019, amending portions of the zoning ordinance related to permitted use within the U2 zoning district. The Plan Commission recommends approval of a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise language regarding permitted uses in U2 University Athletic Facilities District. This is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this item now is open for conversation. Alderman Revelle?
So I'm going to be proposing three amendments to the proposed text amendment. These amendments will address three of the concerns that have been raised about the proposal to host professional sports and commercial entertainment events in the U2 district, but in my opinion, the amendments in no way correct the failure thus far to demonstrate that the proposed text amendment meets the standards for amendments as required in our zoning code, and I'll have more to say about that after we consider my proposed amendments. So, switching papers. So my first motion is to amend the second condition in the list of conditions for temporary events that's in the proposed text amendment, and as a reminder, the conditions are intended to, quote, "to ensure that temporary uses shall not impose an undue adverse effect on the neighboring streets or property," and that's part of the current language in our zoning code. So the current draft of the second condition says, "Written notice shall be provided to residents within 500 feet of the event site, within five business days after event approval by the City Council." In my view, that kind of notice to the neighbors for an event that's already been approved is really meaningless, so I would propose a new condition number two that says, "Sponsors of the temporary event shall provide written notice to residents within 500 feet of the event site at the same time that they submit an application for a special event permit for the temporary event," and that's my motion.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion, motion passes nine, nine to zero.
Thank you.
And just, Alderman, just so I'm clear and people up here are clear, when we say sponsor is required to do that, that means Northwestern University, not the city, or is this, who's incurring the expense to do that?
It's not the city.
Good.
And the first, the first condition already uses the language sponsors of the temporary event, so I'm suggesting that's either Northwestern, or in the past, actually, sometimes the sponsor has been, and the person requesting the change has been another entity altogether, so, but it's definitely not the city.
But it's not the city incurring that expense to notify the neighbors?
Right.
Great, all right, second.
Okay, and my second motion is to amend condition number 11. As currently drafted, the setup and breakdown activities for these special events could occur as early as 6:30 a.m. and as late as 11:30 p.m. outside the hours that are stipulated in our noise ordinance, and I think this would be an additional imposition on adjacent neighbors. So I have what I consider a pretty modest revision to this. It would be to strike, quote, "with the exception of," and add the word "including," and strike the last phase of the sentence, phrase of the sentence, quote, "which shall not exceed 30 minutes before or after the aforementioned times." So the amended condition would read, "No activities related to special events shall occur between 10 p.m. and 7 a.m. from Sunday evening to Friday morning, and between 11 p.m. and 7 a.m. from Friday evening through Sunday morning, including events set up and breakdown procedures," and that's my motion.
Is there any discussion on that motion?
I just would mention that in Highland Park, they have a lot of conditions around the huge concert, concert series that happen every summer, and those concerts must end by 10 p.m., and space concerts at Canal Shores also end by 10 p.m., so it should certainly be possible for these temporary events to have the breakdown concluded by 11 p.m.
Okay, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, that was moved and seconded, all in favor of that motion?
You can't hear. You meant 10, right? I think you said 11.
Well, it, on the weekdays.
No, 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 number 10, line item 10.
Oh, was it number 10, not number 11?
It's, it's line item 10, so you're amending.
Okay, I'm sorry, yep, that's the one I mean, then.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Fisk?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I do need some clarification on that. So you want, you want all noise and activity to stop at 10 p.m., is it? At 11 p.m.?
It would be, the, the, the condition is talking about, basically, how when events should end, and if it's a weeknight, they're supposed to end by 10 p.m. If it's a week, weekend night, they are allowed to go till, till 11 p.m., according to our noise ordinance, and so this would just say that breakdown has to happen within those hours as well.
This brings them into compliance with our noise ordinance?
Our noise ordinance, that's right.
Okay.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Did I hear that the building is soundproof, though?
Oh, yes, yes, about, this is not about the concert noise, this is about the noise of the trucks and the beeps and the, you know, door slamming and all the stuff in the parking lots. Oh, yes. Yes, about, this is not about the concert noise. This is about the noise of the trucks and the beeps and the, you know, door slamming and all the stuff in the parking lots.
Just wanted to make sure I did hear that the building is soundproof.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Apparently.
All right. Okay. So, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes nine to zero, or that amendment, I should say. Okay. Your third?
Yeah, my last motion is to add a sentence at the very end of the proposed text amendment, and that sentence would be, "This text amendment shall not create a precedent for future uses in the U2 district."
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of that motion or amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that amendment passes nine to zero.
May I just request, Alderman Revelle, that you, I think you have these in writing already. Send it to us so we get it right.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. Yep.
Thank you, Clerk.
And then, I'm going to monopolize the microphone for a little while. After we conclude our debate and decision about this whole text amendment, I do have a couple of referrals to staff that I'll be making that I just want to sort of give a heads up about. So, basically, to go back to my big concerns about the text amendment, our city code sets forth standards for approval of amendments to the zoning code, and it charges the city council very expressly with considering these factors in determining, quote, "whether to adopt or deny, or to adopt some modification of, the Plan Commission's recommendations." So, thinking back to the Plan Commission meeting, they had a very, only a very cursory discussion of the standards, and Northwestern has not even attempted to demonstrate that its proposed amendment is, quote, "compatible with the overall character of existing development in the immediate vicinity of the subject property," end quote. That's one of the questions in the actual application for the zoning amendment, zoning ordinance text amendment that Northwestern completed and sent in to us. They did not choose to answer that question. So, as I stated at our last council meeting, simply stating that the standards have been met does not make it so. So, this leaves the task of determining whether the standards have been met to us, the city council. And I don't believe we have the evidence in hand to enable us to make that determination to say, "Yes, indeed, those standards have been met." So, let's just walk briefly through the four standards. The first one says, "Is the proposed amendment consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan?" The plan states that, quote, "Evanston should support the growth and evolution of institutions so long as the growth does not have an adverse impact on the residentially zoned adjacent neighborhoods." And it goes on to say, "Enforcing the standards of the city's zoning ordinance is essential if proposed changes would disrupt the residential character and environment of surrounding neighborhoods." So, we've had a huge outcry from the neighbors of the D2, the U2 district, and I believe they need a response, and I don't think we've had one, certainly from Northwestern. I don't feel comfortable myself saying that, yes, based on the evidence we've received that this proposed text amendment is consistent with the goals of the Comprehensive General Plan. The second standard asks whether the amendment is compatible with the overall character of existing development in the immediate vicinity. And I say again, the answer is no. Professional sports and commercial events are not compatible with the residential character of the neighborhoods surrounding the U2 district. Number three, will the amendment have an adverse effect on the value of adjacent properties? And I am certainly not an expert on this topic, but we've had quite a bit of testimony from members of the public that indeed an adverse impact on property values is a real possibility, and I would like us to have some evidence to the contrary before I could say that that standard has been met. And finally, are the public facilities and services adequate for what is being proposed? And here again, we've heard over and over again that the neighborhood streets are fully parked up when there is a men's basketball game, which is comparable to the kind of event that would be allowed under this text amendment. Residents come home from work and they can't find a place to park near their homes. And even right now, of course, the parking for the men's basketball games, there's a charge to park in the West Ryan Field parking lot, but I think even if the parking there is made free, many people's first choice, though, is to park in the easily available neighborhood streets so they can get home from, leave the game more quickly. So, I, again, I don't believe that we've demonstrated that the public facilities and services are adequate for this text amendment. So, Northwestern has tried for years to gain permission to host professional sports events, and sometimes Northwestern has gone ahead with these events without city permission. Northwestern has tried to do this year after year, and each time, the city council has said no. What is different now? In 1977, as just one example, the city council denied Northwestern's petition for a variation to permit professional tennis matches, finding that the proposed variation, quote, "would alter the essential character of the locality by increasing the intensity of the use so as to detract from the essential character of the surrounding residential neighborhood." So, I ask my colleagues, by what standards and with what justification can we now say that professional sports events and commercial entertainment events won't alter the essential character of the surrounding residential neighborhoods? By what standards and with what justification can we now say that this change in zoning is consistent with our Comprehensive General Plan? I don't believe that we should approve the text amendment.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. We've got a couple of lights on. Alderman Wilson and then Alderman Fisk.
Thank you. So, I think the Comprehensive Plan has been discussed enough, but, you know, in looking at the standards for the amendments, the provision says that it's a matter committed to the sound legislative discretion of the city council, and it's not controlled by any one standard. There is a reference to four factors that should be considered, however, but it notes that those are not the only factors. One of the aspects of all of this, as I've looked at it, and I will mention, I reviewed the materials, I reviewed that economic analysis, I looked up quite a few of the articles that were referenced in that, and reviewed the website that was created by one of our residents. You know, if nothing else, it's, it's a lot of interesting history, right? And the points as to what the neighbors and the people in the community live with and experience are well-taken. I take those seriously. But what's in front of us is a fairly finite request. And in looking at the request, and again, sometimes I've felt like I've been, you know, I'm using social media less, but I feel like I've been pushing back on, you know, against things that are happening and outside of my field of vision. But if we look at the actual language of the text amendment, one of the things that I've considered is, okay, is this going to be a more intensive use or a less intensive use? The existing permitted uses, these are existing permitted uses, not the temporary uses that are being changed, but existing permitted uses in 5, 615-7-2 include musical performances. The limits on that are 10,000. So, there's nothing in there that precludes profit-making concerts. It's just, it doesn't say that. It says that they can have concerts up to 10,000 in an enclosed building. The proposal, as I'm understanding it, is actually reducing that number from 10,000 to 7,000. And if it's going to be held outside, even further reduced to 3,000. If we look at the language for the change to the temporary uses, they've taken out nonprofit nature for the community events, and they've taken out the word amateur with regard to athletic events. But at the same time, they've reduced the number of attending, of attendees from 10,000 to 7,000, and reduced the number of attendees for outdoor events to 3,000. So, that's a 30% reduction for indoor events and a 70% reduction for outdoor events. In addition, previously, the events didn't require council approval. They just had to get a zoning certificate. We have the additional requirement of the notice, and with Alderman Revelle's revision, notice in advance, and a council approval. So, now something that all, all that required before was a zoning compliance certificate. Now, it has to get approved by the council each and every event. In addition, we, previously, the way the ordinance is drafted now, they could have seven events up to five days each. So, in other words, they could have 35 days of events. That's how it is now, today, 35 days. This is being reduced to, I think, 30, let's see, 7 plus 6, so 30. So, it's from 35 to 13. I might be off a day or so. But again, that net number of events is being reduced. In addition, one of the complaints that I always hear is, and we've heard so many times over and over again, people drinking, people, you know, littering in the yards. This is adding where it didn't exist before, a prohibition on the loitering and tailgating. So, that's a net improvement, and I think that's a significant net improvement because that's one of the really primary complaints that I've heard the whole time I've lived here. There are specific limitations on the hours. The change in the nature of events really, for the most part, is very small. They can have 35 non-professional events that are bigger, or they can have 13 events which are significantly smaller, but they might be a, quote unquote, "for-profit enterprise." Or, and again, the concerts are already permitted. So, I'm looking at this as a significantly less intensive use scenario than the way it is now. And that's black and white. It's right in, it's right in the ordinances. And I see a lot of people shaking their heads, but you can pull it up, page 474 of the packet. So, that's, you know, that weighs a lot into, into my thinking in going through this. Again, I've considered all of these other concerns, but at the end of the day, if you're getting a less intensive use, that seems to me to be addressing the concern that I keep hearing from people.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fisk? And then, we've got Alderman Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I had some questions, and I'm going to make a couple of suggestions. An amendment I would like to see is to prohibit traffic exiting the north parking garage, either entering or exiting the parking garage on Lincoln, that that be prohibited because I think that turns, has obvious negative impact. And I'd also like to suggest, I know at Ravinia, there is a community committee that actually reports to the city and is part of the city where the community meets with Ravinia and the, and the village for questions regarding the operation of Ravinia. It's, it's what we sort of do with the NU City Committee, and it's, it makes it less possible for us to fold the, even though there is a T1 zoning area over near Welsh Ryan, it, the use isn't of that T1 facility, so we can't fold this into the NU City Committee. But I would strongly suggest that working with the Ward Alderman and the neighbors and Northwestern, that a committee be set up that meets at least quarterly to discuss concerns. And I'm assuming that that will work as well as our NU City Committee, which has been actually very helpful. It's been really hard for us on council, and I know it's our job to sort of untangle the, the web of comments that have been made, some of which are perfectly on point and some of which are outside of the, our review on this application. But I just wanted to make it clear, I have, not only did I watch live the Plan Commission meeting, being the liaison to the Plan Commission, I promised them I would either attend or watch every single meeting, and I have, I've actually watched this not only in person, but also twice more. And that was almost a five-hour meeting. Because I was concerned about some of the comments that I had heard from people about not having process, not having an opportunity to speak, and about how the commission handled its review of the standards, whether or not there was any reference to a, for example, a traffic analysis or other, other questions. There was. It may not be exactly what you wanted, and it was very brief, but the commission made decisions based on each individual standard and talked about them. So, I just want to, I don't know whether Johanna is still here or not, but I just, oh, gosh, hi.
Hi.
Director Leonard, if I could just, I would like to confirm with you, in the zoning ordinance, under 6-3-4-6, the procedure for review and decision of proposed amendments, which talks about the petition to amend the text of the zoning ordinance, whether that was followed?
Yes, it was. Confirmed. It went to the Plan Commission. It was...
Every step along the way under this, and there, we go from A through G, through H on this, every step along the way, all of these, all of the steps in the process were followed?
If you bear with me, I'm pulling it up on the computer. Yes, so, A, public hearing, we set a public hearing. A public hearing is Plan Commission. Public notice of, public notice of a public hearing, that was, that was done. We don't send mailed notices for text amendments. That is C. D, content of published and mailed notices, published and mailed notices shall contain the time, date, place of the public hearing. That was included. Plan Commission action upon receipt of the petition with the copy of the proposed text and map changes, the Plan Commission shall hold a public hearing scheduled. They did. City council actions, that's F. That's you guys. And G, that, any answers? Right, and so, that's, that, I don't think applies right here. And then, H, and that's, again, that's not applicable right now.
Okay, thank you. And then, my last question is for the Special Events Committee, who is going to, my understanding, is review, and these are public meetings that they have. I would like there to be a, a process. Again, as Alderman Revelle stated, there will be notice to neighbors within, mailed notice within 500, neighbors within 500 feet. But I would like to make sure that we've got a process in place that addresses the neighbors' concerns and what the, what the standards for evaluation are going to be. And I'm, I'm assuming that these will include traffic, noise, adherence to restrictions that we're placing in the, in the ordinance, and just a review of all those things, which I think will offer the, some, some benefit to the, to the neighbors. I, I think that providing free parking is going to help relieve parking in the neighborhood, and I'm, I'm curious to see if that happens. I would expect that it would. And those are my, those are my concerns right now. So, I'm adding my, my amendments to the list begun by Alderman Revelle.
So, do you want, you want us to take these as formal amendments like Alderman Revelle's and vote on each of these?
However it is appropriate to handle that, I think it's, whatever.
Why don't we, why don't we?
We could take them one by one.
We could take them one by one, or we could continue to have the conversation up here, and then you could come and make the formal motion if you want to do that. Okay, let's do that. So, Alderman Fleming's next, and then I've got Alderman Nguyen.
Yeah, so, Director Leonard, can you come back? I have one more question, and this is more for the sake of, I realize some people in the audience are going to disagree, but can you just read from our city code what a map amendment is and what a text amendment is? I know there's been lots of public comment regarding this should have been a map amendment and not a text amendment.
All right. If you can give me a few minutes, my computer's being very slow, so...
Okay, no problem. I'll go to my, I'll go to my next thing. This is not a question for you. So, Alderman Revelle, you mentioned the parking in the area, and I can imagine that that is an issue. Have you thought through, and I know I'm sitting on the Parking and Transportation Committee with you, but have we thought about just making some residential-only parking restrictions on the blocks there so that people just don't have that as an option?
Well, one of my referrals after we finish our discussion is to request staff to help us develop a, an event-based, resident-only parking district requirement, whatever.
Okay, because that could solve one major issue, potentially. Yes, okay. The other thing in terms of, I have a question for Corporation Council, so Alderman Revelle's last amendment, which was, I believe, something about this not being able...
No precedent, I believe.
No precedent, yes. So, is that, as stated, is that legally binding?
It is. Yes.
So, thank you. So, my other, I guess I would just say my thoughts coming from the Ninth Ward, which is south, so we, you know, don't necessarily have this issue. What I hear from my residents, you know, some are potentially interested in going to whatever events might be there. Others have, you know, some of their own frustrations around Northwestern. What I will say is, you know, at my ward meetings, when Northwestern comes up, which is not very often, and it's always, "They should pay taxes." I'm very clear to say they, they don't pay taxes, and, you know, yes, we probably all would love that, but that's probably not going to happen while I sit in this chair. So, I don't entertain it as a long-term question.
So I don't entertain it as a long-term question, it's more of, how can we get them to be, you know, a better neighbor, I think is what people tend to be frustrated by, whatever that means for them. So for you all, obviously, you feel like a better neighbor is not having more congestion in your neighborhood. People in my ward feel like a better neighbor is probably just more money onto the bottom line of the city, so that residents don't have to pay more. So I think one thing I want to point out is, you know, Northwestern makes a case that this is not going to have or have a limited burden to you all, you all make the case that this is going to be, not necessarily the end of the world, but pretty bad, so we probably lie somewhere in the middle for the truth. I know, I don't frequent the games often, when I have come over there to drop off my husband, who has season tickets. What I have seen is some residents who allow cars to park on their grass, and they have signs charging people to park on their grass. I'm pretty sure that's probably against our code, I haven't looked, I'm not calling police for that, but there are some residents who probably enjoy the games, being near them for financial gain or whatever. I've seen people sitting in their front yards. What I would think is we're tailgating. Again, I would assume they're probably drinking liquor, I'm not calling, I'm not stopping to ask them, but I assume that's part of what they enjoy, these particular neighbors about living near Northwestern. So I throw that out there, just to say there are always, obviously, right, two sides to the coin and two different experiences, based on what you prefer individually. And so, as a council, we do have to weigh all that, but we do need to stay within the confines of what our city code says, which is why I'm going to have Director Leonard read those definitions. So in terms of Northwestern, you know, there is lots of frustration, even in my ward, about what are, what people would like for them to do, and we hear a lot about all the land they have, we have seen them build things, we know they don't pay taxes, we have an idea of what their endowment is, and people honestly feel frustrated by that, because they feel like we are nickel and dimeing them, we're raising taxes, we're raising fees, and I think generally, some people feel like Northwestern is getting away scot-free. And I can't necessarily agree or disagree with that. I will say that it's a little bit of a frustration for me that programs that we used to have, like the job training program or skills building or whatever, went away when Northwestern had the, I'll say financial crisis, whatever we want to call it, because that was something that was very tangible for people, we saw huge improvements in a small group of people's lives. So that is frustrating, when you see that, and then you compare it with something like this, where they would like to have for-profit being used, ultimately to make money, I'll just make that assumption. So this is a hard choice for me, I do want to make sure that we are within the confines of our process, that everyone understands why this is a text amendment versus map, whether you agree or not, I want to make sure that that's clear for the record. Excuse me. I do want to encourage, and Dave Davis, I think, has done a great job, he represents the university, but we understand that he does not control their ultimate checkbook, but I do want to strongly encourage him to do what he can with the powers that be at Northwestern, to really have them think about the impact on the city. So there's very tangible things that other universities do in terms of paying, maybe not their full share, but money in lieu of taxes, and I know we have the Good Neighbor Fund with the, with the mayor is working on now renegotiating, but I really would love to see them do something a little more creative, in a way that residents can participate with how the funds are used, that more tangible capital improvement projects can be taken on. I think that would go a long way in the community with, not so much trust building, with people understanding that you all do want to make sure residents in Evanston are taken care of, and that the burden that they have, because you all are not paying taxes on your property, is somehow or another made up for in some other way, if possible. And then my other odd question I had was, I think this was for you, actually, Ms. Leonard, go ahead, and I have another question when you finish this one.
All right, so I'm going to read the purpose statement, because I think that gets to what, the difference between map and text. The purpose of section, this is section 6-3-4-1, the purpose of this section is to provide standards and procedures for making amendments to the text of this ordinance and the zoning map that are of general significance or application. This amendment process is not intended to relieve particular hardships, nor to confer special privileges or rights upon any person, but not to make, but only to make adjustments necessary in light of changed conditions or changes in public policy. So that's a purpose, that's the purpose statement. So the difference between a map and text in that is, a map amendment alters the boundaries of a district, it expands the boundaries of a district. A text amendment alters the uses, the intensity of uses, the other characteristics of a district. In others, we have distance of setback and other requirements, the text of the, of the amendment.
Okay, so if someone came in and put in an application for a text amendment, and you read through it, and you decide this isn't a text amendment, what would you do?
That it is not a text amendment?
Yeah, if they put something in, if I, if I put something in, and I said this is my text amendment, I put in my paperwork, and you read it, and you decide it's actually not a text amendment?
Well, I, I would have to understand, if they're, if, if they put in an application, and they, they want to be an R2, and they're an R1, then I would, I would say that's a map amendment. But if they're seeking to, so when we did, we've done text amendments where we've changed particular uses that can be in districts, we effectively have, have looked at that for, for the I-2 district, when we included the day school, that was a text amendment, we didn't change the boundaries of it to include an area or a neighborhood, we changed what could be allowed in that district.
Okay, thank you. I'm just asking that, because we heard lots of people talk about the process and this being rushed through, and not following, you know, the code and so on and so forth, so I, you know, as much as people are able to believe me, as I sit here and believe you, as you work for the city, help them see that, you know, had Northwestern put this in as a text amendment, and it was actually a map amendment, that would have been something that our staff would have corrected.
So about, so if they had sought to change the adjacent neighborhood to include, they had said, okay, residential district will now include all the things that a university, U2 district wants, let's do a text amendment that way, we might have said, that's actually a map amendment, because you're seeking to change, but that would have been in conversation, not through an application or gone through the Plan Commission, we would have said, that's a map, you're seeking a map amendment. But that's a little more nuanced than just, if they specifically said, we want to include this residential area now as a U2 district, that would be a map amendment.
Thank you. That's all my comment.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Wynn, then Alderman Revel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. I think that Alderman Revel, again, has very eloquently stated it. I don't believe that Northwestern has met its burden of proof with respect to the standards on this, and I will once again vote no on this.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Revel?
Well, I do want to just go back to comment on a couple of my colleagues' comments, and to the extent that we're being asked to rely on the work of the Plan Commission, I sat through the whole commission meeting, and I went back and re-watched the part where they were discussing the standards, and of the five-and-a-half-hour meeting, it was about a 15-minute discussion of the standards, and I found it pretty, pretty difficult to follow. It seemed that a good portion of the discussion was over whether the change was going to, basically, they felt the change was not seemingly going to increase the intensity of use, and they relied heavily on what my colleague Alderman Wilson mentioned this evening, pointing to the fact that, right now, they have the option for, in theory, 35 days of temporary events, where now they're only asking for six one-day and one multi-day event. And so this was a tremendous reduction in intensity of use, but given that, generally speaking, they have only three temporary one-day events currently, one is the run-for-walk 5K race with about 1,000 participants, one is a meet-the-team event with 800 attendees, and then there's the community movie with about 2,500 people. So, number one, they don't get anywhere close to the 35 events that they are allowed to have, and, and those three events are really quite modest in attendance. So, yes, in theory, we're going from 35 days down to six days plus one multi-day event, but the intensity of use, if, if Northwestern does indeed have those events that they would be required, permitted to have with this text amendment, that would be, that would be quite an increase in intensity of use compared to what is currently happening in the neighborhood. So, but nonetheless, that was, that particular argument was very much in the mind of the Plan Commission, as they were beginning to talk about the standards. I felt that there, then they went to standard number two, they spent about a minute or two on it, and they seemed to be not in agreement, some, a couple of them said they didn't agree, and a couple of them said they did agree, and then they got to the Third Amendment, and it was, I truly didn't feel that it was objectively a very solid discussion of the amendments. So that's what I, my rebuttal.
Thank you, Alderman. Is there any more discussion? Okay, so I'm going to go back to Alderman Fisk, then, on what you had put forward, if you want to put these forward as amendments, like Alderman Revel did earlier with her items.
Okay, or, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I guess the, I do like the idea of Alderman Fisk's suggestion that we have a committee similar to the committee that she chairs, but I guess I would see that as beneficial, independent of this text amendment, so maybe you could make a referral to, about that?
Are you, are you okay that we move forward, then, or do you want other items to be amendments?
I do want Lincoln Street to be.
Okay, could you, could you describe that one again better? Because I, I want, I think we all want to understand that better about.
Okay, I've discussed this with Northwestern, about my concern about Lincoln Street not being used as the arterial street between Ryan Field and Sheridan Road, not only for this event, but for, for every, every event, but assuming that you're going to have some parking and be using the north parking garage for some overflow and with shuttle buses, I would like that traffic to be eliminated from Lincoln Street. That's part of Alderman Revel's ward and part of my ward, so, Lincoln between Sheridan and, um...
No, yeah, it's not time for you.
This is not time for us to be talking. So how would, could you describe what, what the traffic, what the cars would do? They, they would go north or south. So the cars would either go north to Central Street, or south to Noise or Foster, or...
And just not use Lincoln.
Not down, not down Lincoln.
Can I chime in? So this would actually be a condition of a special use, not of the ordinance for the text amendment.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
And I'm confused on a little bit of the logistics. So, Central Street is already utilized, right, for shuttle buses? Is that right? So shuttle buses are, do they also use Lincoln? Is that operationally how this works? Okay. So they, Lincoln would be, then be omitted, and they would have to use Noise or some place in Woolmette?
Central.
Okay.
Central. It's, yeah, it's Central Street.
So, so we'll table that for another, another conversation on that, because it applies to a lot more things. Alderman Revel, so, all right, so Alderman Revel, do you have anything else? I saw your light on, or, if it's off, then, okay. So, all right, with that, then, we've got a motion, and it was seconded, this is on P1, Ordinance 135-0-19, amending portions of the zoning ordinance related to permitted uses within the U2 zoning district. City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Wait, wait.
And that's as amended, right?
As amended.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fisk, what about your, your committee?
No, no.
The committee will come under, yeah, the committee will be a separate referral.
Okay.
And that will include the standards for...
Yeah. All right, so City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Yes.
Could you take the role, please?
Yes, Alderman Revel?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
All right. P1, Ordinance 135-0-19, amending portions of the zoning ordinance related to permitted uses within the U2 zoning district passes the City Council on a 5 to 4 vote. Alderman Revel?
So I have two referrals that I'd like staff to develop for us to move forward with. One is, I ask the staff to develop and conduct an assessment of the two-year pilot that we have just approved, because I do think it's very much the city and the City Council's responsibility to assess the pilot and its positive and negative impacts, its pluses and its minuses, et cetera, and probably working with the ward aldermen and residents, and report the results of the assessment to the City Council. And then my second referral is I ask staff to develop and implement, I think as a pilot, an event-based resident-only parking restriction in the neighborhoods around the U2 district to run in tandem with a two-year period of this pilot we've just approved, and, so we can see if there's a way to mitigate the impact of, of this pilot on the neighbors. But I also think that we're going to learn from this pilot whether this kind of an event-based restriction should be in place permanently and for all types of events.
Can I clarify that, please?
Sure.
Is that just for these additional concerts, or would that also include, like, the basketball games?
I would like to include the basketball games.
Any event?
Well, basketball games, because they're so comparable to the kinds of events that...
Right, but I'm saying, any event in the area.
Well, we could include the football games.
I'm, I'm just clarifying, so I know how to go.
I think, I'd like to hold off on the football game part, because that, that has huge implications for, for the city as a whole. So I'm talking basketball games and similar-sized events.
Oh, thank, thank you, Alderman Revel. Okay. We're going to move on now to ED1. Let's see, the Alderman that's in charge, is that you, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Wynn? Could you introduce ED1? Who took that off, ED1? Are you looking for that? Alderman Wynn? Oh, yeah, you're up. I got you as the chair of the Economic Development.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was...
No worries.
...lost in reading. Yes, ED1, Ordinance 125019, amending portions of city code sections to remove the requirement for business licenses and implement a business registration program. The Economic Development Committee and staff recommend adoption of Ordinance 125019, amending portions of city code sections to remove the requirement for business licenses and implement a business registration program. This will include the addition of home-based and state licensed businesses to the registration program. I move approval.
Is there a second? Okay.
Or introduction.
All right, and ED1's now opened up for conversation, any discussion? Alderman Suffertin?
Sure. I'm just going to encourage everyone to vote no, and note the absurdity of clipping home-based businesses for $25 after what you just gave Northwestern.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fleming?
I'm sorry, my only question, and I'm trying to just reread this, I wanted to make sure that we didn't have a late fee, assuming that it's going to take a while, just like with our, when we did the Airbnb license, you know, it's going to take a while for businesses to know that this exists now, and for us to find them, and so on and so forth, so I want to make sure we're not implying a late fee, in case businesses do not get signed up right away.
Good evening. I anticipate some sort of amnesty, once we get this, if this is approved, I anticipate that we would probably extend this into the springtime, just to get the word out, and not impose any fees at this point.
So starting to get the word out in January, and then allowing people to register?
Right, as soon as the legislation is, if the ordinance is approved, we would go about alerting people that this is changed, and then, right now, this states a deadline of January 31st, but I would anticipate we'd keep it open at least another 30 days beyond that.
So can we just make the deadline longer?
If, if you would like to amend that, that's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, because it's, assuming this is for introduction tonight, so assuming this, you know, passes, it's December, it's holidays, I think that it would be fair to, you know, just kind of think off the top of my head, make it like March 1st or something, it's going to take, I know just from my ward, trying to find home-based businesses, like in Yahoo, a lot of them are out of business, or whatever, so.
There is a current fee for home-based businesses.
Right, but I don't want people to get this new information, and then it, they're already getting it, and then they think they're late already.
Sure. If there, if you would like to do March 1st, we're fine with that.
I can, can I amend it now, as an introduction? Okay, so I'd like to make an amendment that this is, the due date would be March 1st versus the January 31st.
Is there a second? To that amendment?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Does everybody understand the amendment? All right, so, so we're basically moving, moving the date for when it, and correct me if I'm wrong, basically, when it will be enforced, we're giving a We're giving a longer amnesty at the very beginning to get the word out about this.
Right, so right now it would go out and people would have to pay, it would say in the letter by January 31st, but assuming some people don't get it right away and it's the holidays, that we allow them more time since this is a new fee, that they could pay by March 1st without thinking they're going to be late.
Okay.
All right. Got a couple. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
This is introduction.
This is introduction, but this would be changing it, yeah, for, so when it comes back for action, it would have this date in it, the one that Alderman Fleming's suggesting.
Okay, I'll get my questions answered by then.
Okay. Alderman Revelle, did you want to add anything?
Well, could I just have a little more information about what currently happens with home-based businesses? So we do have, they currently do pay some kind of a fee and.
Can I piggyback off of that? I think it would be good for people that are here and people that are watching at home, if you just gave a quick, brief overview of what this fee is, why, what the rationale is for why we're bringing this up.
Sure. So instead of a license, we would have a registration. And one of the issues that has regularly emerged with businesses is we don't know all the people who do a business in Evanston, because some of them are licensed by other entities and our code says if you're licensed by another entity, you don't have to get a local business license. So we don't know, we can gather some information from the state, some information from other resources, but we don't have a comprehensive list of all the businesses. So at some point in the past, I'd say five, six years, we added home-based, this home-based business piece because I believe there had been some complaints about businesses that were operating and making sure they were zoning compliant and other things, they truly were home-based businesses. So that, that came about then, but the overall, we want to, we want to also make sure that we're able to get into some of these spaces, to make sure that they're safe, that they, that particularly life safety measures have been taken care of, that people are coming to work every day, that there's not obstructions to exits, fire alarms, carbon dioxide, all those, those things. And also, just to know where they are, when we try to do procurement and we want to go for a particular business that isn't something that we license, we want to be able to know and be able to cultivate to say, here's an Evanston-based business that we can send opportunities to.
So what is the, what is the problem that we're solving? Or is it, we just want to know who all the businesses are around town? I mean, there's tons of home-based businesses.
Right, and they don't, I mean, we don't make an active effort to go out and, you know, knock on everybody's door and ask if you are running a home-based business, but we make best efforts to try to, if we know that somebody's operating a home-based business, we remind them, we send them a letter, we, if it's a face-to-face contact, we might remind them to.
Okay, but what's the problem that we're solving?
Problem we're trying to solve is that we don't know all the businesses and.
And why is it necessary for us as a city to know all the businesses here?
We regularly get asks of how many businesses are in Evanston, and that's not an answer that we can, this, this may not solve all of that, but it gets to knowing what businesses are in Evanston and who's operating. So when, when city council wants us to say we are, we want to procure this locally, we may not be able to find all the people who do X, you know, particularly some, some of the professional services, those are entities licensed by the state, we don't know who they are. So it's often that the individuals that have access, have knowledge, know how city councils and government, local government work. Even when we want to, we want to raise the issue of having a procurement fair or how to, how to procure other services, Northwestern has indicated this is something that they wanted. When we have these procurement activities, other, other large entities are interested in, in accessing the list of Evanston businesses.
Okay. Alderman Ruth Simmons? And stay up here, we may have some more questions for you.
Thank you. So I, because we do have so many home-based businesses that aren't being included in, you know, the discussion, it was one way to establish kind of a location-independent, either merchant association, those were some things that I talked about earlier. But I would not be in support of regulating or fining businesses for not registering. I think that it should be an option for those home businesses to opt-in, to register for the benefit of their business growth, for procurement opportunities, to be in maybe a local business directory, or even to join their neighborhood business directory. I had another point. Oh, we currently have major and minor approved home-based businesses, so it's not so much that folks are operating non-compliant. I imagine there's some of that, but I want to be careful that we don't use this as a tool to make doing home, home-based business more difficult, because it is the only way for many of our micro businesses and small businesses to operate where they cannot afford the overhead of even a coworking space. So I want to be really careful, but I also want to get them on the radar. So if we could consider this being an optional registration and one that isn't enforced like our health department matters, that's something that I would like us to talk about a little bit more.
Sure, we can, we can look into that. The only piece that comes to mind where I've seen this as a problem is when you deal with landscape businesses that often come with a lot of equipment. And so at what point are they storing too much equipment and their intensity of use is greater in a residential neighborhood than it, than somebody who's an accountant or operating out of their home?
And so maybe we look at changing what is approved major home-based business and minor and look at regulating the, you know, amount of equipment or whatever, but I want to be careful about going into folks' homes and.
Oh, yeah, we, I don't think that was the intention, to go into somebody's home and to make sure, from a life safety perspective, I think it.
I heard you say that, though, that's why I got.
And I didn't mean to go into somebody, to say we're going to go into somebody's home. It's more of, I'm thinking, and we have a case right now where somebody's been operating a law practice and has employees and the fire department had never been in there because that person is not, is not a licensed business in Evanston, so. So that would, that's, that's the first thing that came to mind. But we can talk about this. It was, it was a 2008 ordinance that created the home-based business registration fee.
Oh.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
I tried to refresh my memory on, because it's been a while since we talked about it at economic development, so I had thoughts then, that now, honestly, I just can't recall. I see that I had made comments, but I, I think I'm leaning towards the direction I think that the mayor was going, is that I'm not sure what problem we're solving. You know, capturing, charging people to capture data isn't something I'm interested in doing, but, you know, maybe this can kind of go along and we'll see where it ends up in a.
And I, I should have added, I'm sorry, this is eliminating the annual sign permit fee. So every year, we send an invoice to businesses to essentially charge them for the signs that they have to, to display their business. So this would eliminate that, that fee.
So in place of that?
Yeah.
And I'm going to guess, just, you know, based on that 10,000 number that I saw somewhere, that's, I'm going to guess a huge proportion of that is, is things like, you know, Secretary of State registrations that really, like, isn't actually a business, it's just, you know, but I don't know that for sure, I'm just guessing. Okay, so that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, real quick, so I, I do like what Alderman Ruth Simmons said, because I can think about several businesses in my ward, the people are doing, you know, medical transcription or whatever and, you know, whatever they're doing. But there are also, then I have lots of auto repair places that, of all the ones that I have, only one is licensed and he will now get the parking permits that we're issuing because he is the one licensed business. And I would like to have those people licensed for different reasons, because we have some environmental concerns and good neighbor concerns. I mean, I'm not as concerned about the woman in our house who's typing up court transcriptions. So maybe there's a way that we can kind of, I'm not really sure about the major and minor of small businesses, but there's a way that we can kind of sparse out the ones that we really need to regulate, not just for the sake of knowing they're in town, but if we have some other concerns about their business that is not regulated in some other ways. I know I have some concerns about our towing company and the lack of regulation there. So, so there are some that I would like to, not necessarily for the sake of fees, but so we can have a little more engagement and try to make sure that they are good business owners in our city. And maybe skipping some of the ones that are, for doing an opt-in, as Alderman Ruth Simmons suggested, so they can be on the radar and get some employment opportunities, but not be penalized $25 because we want to just know their name. And I know you're not saying that, but to simplify it. So is there a way that we can kind of look at those changes and bring it back?
Sure, we can, we can study those and provide that in an updated staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so lots of discussion on this item, no, no more lights. This was moved and seconded. This is for introduction only right now. And this is an ordinance, so we're going to go ahead and the city clerk take the role on this.
Can I just ask a question? So are we, are we kind of getting a whole new?
Well, we could, there's a couple things. Somebody could hold, somebody could ask for a hold, hold on this.
Right.
Right? And have the city go back based on this conversation and everything and then come back to council.
Because it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to me that we're ready to vote on this.
I agree with you. We table it to the 25th, like we did with the other item.
Okay, second.
Actually, that's not a horrible idea. You want to send it back to economic development? Okay, withdraw my motion.
All right, Peter.
I'd like, second Peter's motion.
Move to, so send it back to Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This item, ED1, Ordinance 125-0-19, has been returned to the Economic Development Committee. Let's see, Alderman Fisk, could you introduce HS1?
Yes, Ordinance 79-0-19, creating Title II, Chapter 15 of the Evanston City Code, forming a citizen police review commission. Staff recommends adoption, and it's for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, this item's open for conversation. Alderman Fleming?
So in human services, when we spoke about this, which was, I don't know how month, whenever we did, that version that came to us was one in which I supported. I think Alderman Braithwaite made some suggestions back to another version, we've had several iterations of this. So I pulled this off because I would really like us to think about striking some of the language that's in here. This is our new police advisory board and they've made Kimberly Richardson work with citizens and while no one is ever totally satisfied, we've made some progress on this. So the, the issue that I have with this particularly is on page three of the ordinance and it's under 215-3, under Training and Orientation, letter D, where it says all members must sign a confidentiality and nondisclosure form regarding executive session information and personal privacy information related to the complaint and/or witness or victims as part of the investigation. And the reason that I would like to take that out is because, as we know, in executive session, there is also, I mean, there are other rules that already govern executive session, which is while they're private. And the training for this new commission, they will go through those trainings and those same executive session rules would apply that apply to us as council members. And so I think to have this additional letter that they need to sign is really a lot and doesn't necessarily communicate to the public that we're trying to have a transparent and open process with our police review, police complaint review board. And I know, you know, people who have been following this issue, that's really what they wanted, was more information, not less information. So I think we, we got it to a place that was a little bit better and to have that confidentiality waiver or form put back in there just causes a little less trust with the community.
All right, so can I assume that was put forward as, as an amendment to this?
Yes, sorry.
Is there a, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. So there was a second to that. Any conversation? Okay, seeing, seeing no lights. City Clerk, could you, yeah, City Clerk, could you take the role? Okay, could you take the role?
Alderman Revelle? Alderman Rainey?
She said aye.
Oh, I did not hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Braithwaite? Alderman Nguyen? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Okay, so that amendment, striking the NDA, passes on an eight to one vote. Okay. All right, so this ordinance.
Now we have to accept the whole thing, right?
Correct.
Okay, sorry.
So this, this ordinance was moved and seconded, that's how we ended up discussing it. I see no lights to discuss further, so City Clerk, could you take the role on HS1, Ordinance 79-0-19, forming a citizen police review commission as amended?
Yes. Alderman Revelle? Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
All right. HS1, Ordinance 79-0-19, forms a citizen police review commission as amended, passes the city council on a nine to zero vote. All right, Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I should have mentioned this before, but I, I'm assuming that during the training, it is going to be mentioned to the, to the members of the, of the board, that these are serious concerns that are being discussed and confidentiality is required.
Absolutely, they're in executive session and the rules around the executive session will apply.
Okay.
All right. Now we're going to move to Special Order of Business tonight, which is an important Special Order of Business, which is to resume discussion of our 2020 and 2021 proposed budget. And this is SP1, we only had one item on, on Special Orders of Business. And then once we finish this up, we'll ask Alderman Wilson to lead us into executive session and we will have executive session tonight. So interim city manager, could you start us off? I know at the last meeting, we had some requests for some additional information and wanting to start off this conversation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a short, five-minute tops presentation, just summarizing some of the top concerns that we hope to further discuss this evening, so I'm going to ask Hattash and Kate to pull that up and just give us a quick overview.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So yeah, as the manager's story, he'll describe, it's just a short description and these are the, some of the important items. If we can move to the next slide. Okay, yes, these are the, some of the items for discussion in the last, like, a few weeks related to the budget. First one is the vacant property registration, the parking, the $2 on-street and the Sunday parking. Third one was the inquiry about the amusement tax and hotel tax, if we increase, how much estimated revenue would be there? And the next, the last one was the reimbursement for police and public work services. And then we have some, yeah, the details for each of them in one slide. And if you have a question, yeah, we can have the concerned department staff come here and explain in detail. This is about the vacant property. And we have the, yeah, the detailed budget memo on our City of Evanston budget website. Again, this is about the vacant property, on-street parking, increasing from $1.52 per hour and eliminating Sunday parking charges. Other taxes, as I mentioned, amusement tax, if we go from four to five percent, what would be the impact? And hotel tax, increase of half percent would increase around, would yield around $125,000 to $150,000. And the last item is service reimbursement. Some of the members have the question about whether we get the reimbursement, how much and on which event. So you see that, okay, whether we receive the reimbursement for public works employees, currently we don't. Average cost per game is around $1,000. Police details during the NU games are reimbursed. And the last thing is the kind of proposal that we could add, about the tiered fee of $50 to $200. And again, these are the budget memos, they are in full details on our budget website. Some of the upcoming dates, Mayor's Town Hall on November 14th at 7:00 p.m., November 18th, city council meeting, we would introduce all the budget ordinance and tax levy, new revenues included in 2020, so you would see the ordinances for those revenues. And November 25th, we anticipate the adoption of the budget ordinance tax levies and we call it a debt amendment to which impacts the tax levy for debt service. call it a data adjustment to which impacts the tax levy for that service. And the lastly, where the information is, again, most of the people are aware of that budget website, and the budget memos, they are on the, right there on the budget website.
Thank you, Hattash. Alderman Rainey?
Did you say Rainey?
I said you.
Do we have a sheet, Hattash?
Yes.
Do we have a sheet that shows the balancing act?
Budget balancing worksheet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, which, you know, I haven't seen that lately. Okay, anyway, okay, just knowing that we have it, I can look at it tomorrow.
Right.
Okay, so I, I did read about the $300,000 revenue generated from Sundays. I really, I really would-
Right, and we can bring up the budget memos too.
I, I know, I have that. I really, I really want to get rid of that. I, you know, I don't have a problem with the $2 thing Monday through Saturday. You know, we're, we're giving away the Christmas holidays. I, I think we ought to take away Sundays. That has been really controversial, and I just, I just think we don't need the bad publicity.
Was it 300,000 or 265,000 on that?
Did I say 300,000?
I thought it was 265, so even less than 300, so-
I'll go with 265.
Meaning, just so everybody understands, if we eliminated paying for parking on Sundays, we'd be short 265,000.
The range that was given was between 265,000 and 300,000. So the low end is, is 265.
Can we take, can we take, we can, we can take straw polls and sort of votes at this meeting, right? So if people wanna move on that, we can take it just to get a general feeling if there's a consensus?
Yes, and, and in talking about this, I would like to talk about it in conjunction with the, the $2 increase.
I'm in favor of that.
Would like to know if, if we were to lose both, that would be very detrimental, so if we're gonna have, lose one and not the other, you know, my suggestion would be the same. It's much more difficult for people to get cited for not parking on a Sunday than it is for them to pay an additional amount for, to actually park, so makes sense to go this route.
And again, last year, the council approved the ordinance that said it was $1.50 this year and $2, starting in January 2020, right?
Correct.
And if we were to eliminate that and not have that, the cost to us would be 1.5 to 1.9 million dollars, that we'd have to find savings elsewhere for that.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, Alderman Fisk?
I have one other thing.
Okay, Alderman Rainey, and then we'll go to Fisk.
Just one other thing. Just relax, everybody. At one point, we talked about video gaming. The communities surround, paramedics.
Over the U2 district, no doubt.
Communities surrounding us have video gaming. And I would like us to determine the kind of revenue generated from that. And from what I understand, they're doing very, very well. And I would like to know what kind of revenue we could generate from a modest addition of video gaming in Evanston. Hey, we're doing, we're doing drugs. Let's take a look at gambling.
We can prepare that for a budget memo. I think we have figures readily available.
Yeah, Skokie?
I can share that, yes, you're right, I think Niles is upward of 300,000, and they have almost 25 location, I mean, the licenses. So yeah, I mean, if we start with the bare minimum, if we call it a five, between five and 10, you could talk about, yeah, even in the first year, maybe around 100,000 of licensing revenue plus the other tax revenue.
I, I know, what I understand from talking to people is that there's a limit of like seven machines per location.
Right.
And I mean, they're, they're not in Target or anything.
But these are the locations, I think Niles or Moton Grove, and I have the data I can share with you, that they have more than 300,000 in revenue with over around 20, yeah, different licenses.
Alderman Fisk?
Okay, I agree on the Sunday, no parking, um, free parking on Sunday. I think that's a really, really good idea. And $2 is, doesn't make me happy, but I would agree to that, to get the Sunday parking. Can we go back to, I wanted to talk a little bit about the self-storage charges. I, I would like information about, because these, these uses are, are taxed, their property taxes are as commercial, commercial properties. I would like to know what taxes they're paying now, and what anticipated taxes for them would be for next year.
Okay, thank, thank you. Well, city manager's office will look into that. Alderman Revelle?
Well, while we're talking about parking, I guess I would like to know from staff, because I couldn't tell from the memo that we have from November 1st about, I'm back to parking. If we were to not raise the fee for the parking on, for Central Street Business District and keep that at, at $1.50, what kind of a hit would that make for our budget? I mean, if you look at the memo we talk about, one reason we're going with this increase is to increase the effectiveness of a demand-based parking strategy, and that's only valid, really, in the downtown, where we have free parking available or lower-cost parking available in the parking garages. For the Central Street businesses, we don't have that kind of a demand-based pricing alternative, so, and, and I really do think the Central Street area is vulnerable because of the free parking, so readily available just a few blocks away in Willmett. So I'd like to know what we're, what kind of dollar amount we're talking about here.
If, if we kept Central Street at $1.50?
At $1.50, right.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, some, some years ago, several years ago, we went from, we, we decided to make the parking consistent throughout the city, because that was negatively affecting the downtown. Pardon me? Because downtown was paying more for parking than neighborhood shopping districts were paying, and, and people are driving and parking all over. I think it's, it's, I, I don't see a problem with businesses on Central Street. I see Central Street as, as a very attractive place for people to come and, and do business. We've certainly heard from a lot of businesses regarding the, you know, the Welch Ryan proposal. I, I just think that we need to be fair to everyone in the city, and if we're gonna have parking rates, not make the businesses that are really struggling in the downtown and paying exorbitant rates for the spaces they have in the downtown not negatively affect them any further. So I, I would not, I would not support that.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Revelle and Alderman Wilson?
Well, I just wanna make one more comment, that I, I am hearing anecdotally from some of the Central Street businesses, that business is down. I mean, I agree, Central Street is wonderful, but, but there is also the feeling from them that their sales are down.
A good business owner wouldn't ever tell you their sales are up. All right, Alderman Wilson?
Well, I hear similar things, but they tend to be more directed at things like online shopping and things of that nature, but, you know, if, again, I, I agree with Alderman Fisk, there are a number of small business shopping districts and, and adjacent to my ward, and I don't really think it's fair, and, and all through the city, so I don't think it's fair to kind of just pick, you know, one few block stretch and say, okay, well, this is extra special street, they get extra special parking. I think it's really important to be consistent, so we can, you know, maintain, you know, fair application of the rules to everybody.
Thank you. Before we move away from parking, because I know we've had a good conversation about that, does anyone want to sort of make a motion? Just, this would just be a straw poll to give direction to the city staff, the city manager's office about Sunday parking, eliminating that? It could be a mo, I'd like to move, I'd like to express a thought about Sunday parking and remove the parking fees, and if you feel the way that I feel about that thought, just kind of shake your head up and down. All right. General direction that we're giving to the city manager's office? Okay, so if we do that, just knowing the budget, you know, our worksheet here, we've got 300, 265 to 300,000 that we have to make up some other way. Okay, all right, Alderman?
I'm just gonna note that that revenue is in the parking fund, and we wouldn't necessarily have to make it up dollar for dollar.
Okay, but we do know that the parking fund has become depleted over the last, you know, several, several years, so we still, the parking fund's an important fund.
It is an important fund.
We need money in the parking fund to do lots of important transportation parking stuff here.
Yeah, so the parking fund is currently providing the general fund with about 3.5 million dollars in revenue each year. In addition, we have a number of capital improvement projects slated for next year, including resurfacing over a pretty big lot at Poplar, Central Street Metro, so.
I would still, I would suggest to the council that, just because it's not the general fund, that we ought to be thinking about where that additional 265 to 300,000 comes into the, into the parking fund. Okay, Alderman Fleming?
Actually, this is a question maybe for the city manager's office. So we heard a couple times now from the self-storage owners, I assume, about the tax. So Alderman Fisk, you asked about the property taxes. My understanding is this tax is on the user, right? This is on the user of the one storage unit, not the owner. Right, this tax we're proposing is on the customer who's renting the one unit?
Yes, but it's still, it, it, it still impacts the property.
No, I, I get that, but I just wanted to be clear that that's, the tax we're proposing is that. So do we have any information, I'm, you know, I don't wanna necessarily doubt someone's reference point, but several times now, and I think in an email as well, it said that, you know, this tax is going to hurt the user, and those are low-income, minority, tonight I think it was said that they were immigrant population. It, I haven't rented a storage in a long time, but when I did, there was no question in terms of any of those things on my application for renting a storage unit. So do we know, I'm assuming we do not know the demographics of people who rent storage units? Is that safe to say?
That's, that's fairly accurate.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I just wanted, because it's been several times now that we're gonna-
I have two in my ward, and no one's ever presented that information in 10 years.
Okay, no, I just, I've now heard it several times, I wanted to, for the record, make sure we do not have that information. Okay.
I do own one, and I don't wanna tax, no. Alderman, let's see, Ruth Simmons, and then we're gonna go to Alderman Braithwaite.
I would bet that that's accurate, just based on what I know about circumstances and, and life when folks are getting storage units, so I'm not gonna be in support of a tax that is taxing the customer for the storage units, for all the reasons that have been explained. I don't need to repeat them, but.
Thank, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. And I'm carefully looking at it as well. Erica, can you help me to understand, so if, if it's technically being paid by residents, and we're talking, what, $5 on every 100?
Correct.
Okay, so that's five on every 100. I don't know what the average stay is, so, I mean, you can do the math on the year. Yeah, yeah, yeah. What is the cost to collect that? And how are we gonna be compliant? Because is it gonna cost us just as much as it is to bring in the 50,000? Are we gonna have to hire new staff? Are we gonna have to purchase new software? I mean, how are we gonna hold these folks accountable?
Sure, so we do have a number of taxes and fees that are collected by the collector's office that fall in this range, so it is a small dollar amount, and if we were to move forward without it, we would have to, you know, find some other way to make that up, but we don't, we don't foresee having to hire additional staff to maintain this. It would just be collected on a monthly basis with all the other taxes that we currently collect.
Is there a general direction the council would like to give the city manager's office on this item?
I would like for us not to tax the customers on that, so how could I move that we remove it?
I think the question is also, at the same time, if we did remove it, then where are we gonna make up the difference?
Well, that's what this exercise is about, so.
So basic-
That's one, where families are transitioning, and, you know, they're dealing with homelessness, and they're vulnerable, it's already expensive, folks are losing all of their possessions due to the high storage costs. I can speak about this from personal experience with people that I know in the community and in my family, so I would be recommending that we do not tax this any further.
And just, again, so everybody understands, if we take this off the table, that just means we got three, you know, 300 from the other, and then 50 here, that we gotta figure out somewhere else. Okay? So is there a general consensus that people would like to have the city manager remove that tax? What seems like it? Alderman Rainey, do you wanna talk about that?
I, I just did away with my lease at the storage facility on Oakton, because I got a garage, which I've been trying to get for three years. I've had the space for five years, I never visited it except for three times. And my rent went from like $69 to 100, and then I saw some ads about, they were giving, you know, the same storage unit I had, which was the smallest, which was like six by nine, I mean, it was the tiniest little thing. And so I went in and complained, and they lowered my fee to $77. Now, if I'm paying 77, and I'm gonna get a $5 tax a month on that, I, I would move out immediately. So I think that's an awful lot of tax.
So you agree taking that off?
I would agree taking that amount off, definitely. I don't know if it would be worth our while to tax it less, but frankly, I know the place was pretty full, but, you know, the three times I went there, I never saw another person, so I don't know what was going on there.
Alderman Fisk?
Okay, so let's just think for a minute about how this would work. So we don't keep a list of people who are renting storage lockers.
No.
We would say to the storage locker operator, of the facility operator, you submit that amount to us on a monthly basis or whenever. There's no way that they're not gonna do that without putting an additional charge on there. I mean, most of these places have one person in their office.
Yeah.
I, I just, I just don't see it. There's gonna be, there's gonna be additional charges here, and it's not, I mean, if we were going to keep, keep track of every single person and bill them out directly from the city, and keep our costs at, what, $5 per 100, maybe that's one thing, but it's not gonna end up being like that. There's gonna be a whole lot of stuff that's folded, folded in here, and, and the cost of these storage facilities is going to increase because of that.
Okay, so seems like this general consensus, Erica, to pull, pull that off, so, okay, all right, let's go to another item that folks wanted to discuss.
Can I just make a point? Because they came in and, you know, it always, I get a little bit itchy when people advocate. I love when they advocate for people of color and those that are, you know, with low incomes. I love it. I think we need to challenge them on their fee structure, 'cause I think most places, they'll let you rent for a dollar for the month, and then after that, it incrementally like flies up. So if you're so concerned about people of color and minorities and all those other things, I think we challenge them on their fee str, I don't know how you regulate it, but it's just, it's worth me saying, you come in here and you pimp out poor people, then why don't you examine yourself? And I'll make sure that I share that with my business owners. I know, but I just had to express it.
All right, all right, I'm taking up new items right now. Alderman Rainey? Oh, okay, all right, I missed with my lights. Okay, well, let's go with Alderman, they came on at the same time, we'll go with Alderman Revelle, then Alderman Fleming.
Well, so I have a question about the October 17th memo on the amusement tax revenue. At the very end, it says athletic events at Northwestern University are not subject to the amusement tax. These events are covered through a different tax called the athletic contest tax. Other performances at Northwestern would be exempt from the tax due to the university's status as a nonprofit organization. So what are we saying about these new temporary events, these commercial for-profit concerts, for example? Are they gonna be subject to the amusement tax? Is that gonna be legal?
And, and to that point, just so everybody's clear, that any revenue generated from NU having those events that were approved today is not baked into this budget right now.
Michelle, can you answer that question?
Good evening, Michelle Mason Cup. So the amusement tax would be taxed for the events that were just approved tonight, because they were very clear that those are commercial events, that these were not nonprofit events.
So even though they are nonprofit, we could still-
I think the sponsor of the event will be such-and-such event promoter.
Okay.
So the promoter is not a nonprofit. I'm just making that assumption, but they were very clear that, that these are commercial events.
Okay.
I would also add too, that there has been discussion in the past about Northlight Theater, and when they arrive, and they are nonprofit, and if the tax at that point in time should be extended to nonprofits, that would cover Northwestern events as well, if the direction of the council was- of the council was to go that way, we could make an amendment to the amusement tax ordinance.
And again, you could, based on the vote this evening, and again, who knows if Northwestern brings any events here or not, again, next year, but you could run an estimate of what that might generate under the amusement tax right now, or the, because that would apply to them, would it not?
Yes, based on tonight's vote, we would expect to see increased revenue next year for these events. However, we haven't really, you know, obviously, we haven't built that into the budget, not knowing what the result was gonna be. So it's premature at this point to...
Right, but I'm just saying, if that was $50,000, well, that takes care of the storage that we just said we don't wanna do, right?
Likely, very.
I think it'd be good if there was, if they can do some analysis on that. Again, I know there's a lot of assumptions baked into this. They may do no events despite, you know, the authority to do some. Okay, Alderman Fleming, and then I've got Alderman Rainey.
So, just to that point about Northlight for future businesses, I would be totally in support of having them pay a ticket tax, amusement tax. I mean, if they're nonprofit and they own a building, obviously, they're not paying any property taxes. And so I think it's only fair to ask them to have some kind of ticket tax. But in terms of the money for the self-storage, so I, Alderman Braithwaite, if we could figure that out, I would think that would be great. I, I understand and definitely agree with your, which was why I had to ask the question about the demographics of people using storage. I don't doubt that there are some who need them, who are facing real financial hardships, but it is, I would assume that everyone in the storage unit is not in that case. But to replace the storage unit $50,000, I would propose that we cancel our auto allowance that we now have for staff. And part of that has to do with people can use one of the many city cars we have up front. They can put in a mileage reimbursement, which I think is like 55 cents or whatever it says on the budget memo we have here. But the auto allowance is somewhere around 51,000. That is not including, let me double check. I think that is not including the library director's auto allowance, because we, we don't do their contract. But that could replace the storage fee that we just lost, and city staff could still get reimbursed for their mileage under the, I think it's the state or the federal mileage reimbursement fee that we would use, or use one of the city cars that we have. Part of my issue with that, because I see a lot of eye rolling, is that some staff, if you look on the list, their job, at least in their job description, from what I understand, they're not in and out of the building all the time. Some aren't parking, and they're working here all day. We also just need to be more mindful with taxpayer dollars. I think, you know, when you work at a city government, and, you know, we have some comparisons in the budget as well, there are some cities who have car allowances for certain staff. If you look at the way our car allowances is set up, we have staff who are getting like $20 a month. I'm really not sure what that's doing for you for a car allowance in the first place. And it also, from what I'm reading and from looking at the job descriptions, I'm not sure how we decide who gets $20 and who gets $50. And so to make it a more even distribution, I would just say that we set a new policy around mileage reimbursement or usage of a city car, if your job entails you to be in and out of the building. And obviously, keeping the cars that people have in facilities and such who are more on call nature.
Okay. So we got lots of lights up here. So if you have an opinion about what Alderman Fleming said, and you would like to share it, that would be helpful, and then we'll come back to that as well. Alderman, you don't, okay. So Alderman Rainey, did you not wanna...
Yes, I have my...
Okay, I got you.
First of all, I would like to know, is it, or is it not viable to tax not-for-profit, let's just use performing theater companies, for their ticket? Please. Can you do it?
I'm not prepared to answer that tonight, but I'll look into it.
Okay, all right. And, and could we do it by way of, let's say, people who generate a certain amount of, you know, income a year? In other words, we wouldn't wanna tax somebody who's got a $5,000 theater company, you know?
Right, good point.
Along those lines. In other words, somebody who's a, a, a real live profitable theater company. And I don't mean of the level of Northlight, but somebody who's, who's doing fairly well and has been in business for a while. Could we make a distinction?
I think my initial feedback is that it's easier if we base it on the number of seats versus the revenue that they generate. That would be a little more objective for city staff to be able to address, such as a small-scale operation, you know, as 50 seats versus the Northlight. I, it sounds like they contemplate on a much larger seating, so.
All right, that's, all right, all right. Second of all, I, I agree with Alderman Fleming about reimbursing people for auto. I, I think that's a fairer way to go. I, I find, when I look at the bills list, and I know that I've been with somebody to a meeting, and I see that I'm paying for my parking, but I see a staff member who's making $100,000 getting reimbursed for the same parking space next to me that I paid for myself. So I, I think, I think our staff can, you know, they don't need a car. They could, they, they don't need a parking allowance, or auto allowance. They can certainly get a, you know, reimbursed. That's what I think. I, I really think that they really need an allowance.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanna add two things to just sort of frame this conversation. The question was asked earlier on the self-storage tax, you know, how, how much would that cost us to implement? I would, I would convey that us having to ask each individual employee to submit their mileage for all of the trips that they take will probably cost us $50,000 in staff time to do that paperwork, to get those reimbursements done. They will have to be on the bills list, et cetera. And then also, just another way to look at this is salaries are pensionable. Auto allowances are a way to provide incentives to staff that aren't pensionable wages.
Okay, that's a good point.
I would just, I would just say, as somebody who's spent 25 years in professional services, and I have to account for every single hour that I work, every single expense that I have, yeah, it's awful. I mean, if you've worked in law firm, if you've worked in any of stuff, doing this stuff, and there's a reason that organizations move to these kind of allowances, because literally, the amount of time it takes to track and keep track, okay, I'm running all this city business, I'm the DPW director, and I'm going back and forth. I did eight miles here, five miles here, 10 miles here. He's gonna spend, or she's gonna spend, a couple hours putting all this stuff together for their expense report, so.
There's nothing like, though, looking at your expenses and know nobody's reimbursing you. Tried that one.
Oh, I live that every day in this job, Alderman Rainey, okay?
Yes, so do we.
All right. We all do, we, everybody up here does. So, well, let's see, we got Alderman Wilson, and Alderman Wilson then Fleming.
I think most of the points were covered. I think that also the reimbursement rate's now like 58, 58 cents a mile, so that's gonna add up. And if they're using the city cars, it's gonna be, we're gonna have to be replacing those city cars more frequently, and that's, that's also a cost as well, and as far as maintaining those.
All right, thank you, Alderman, Alderman Fleming.
So I'm losing this vote, that's fine. So if nothing else, I would like us to have some kind of rhyme or reason to the policy that we have. I mean, I'm looking at the list now, and there are some people who, you know, are parked, I would assume their job is, they come here, they park, they work eight hours, they go home. I don't know why that allows you a car allowance. I mean, if I take a job downtown Chicago, depending on where I work, I have to take the train or do whatever I do to get there. That's part of me taking a job. I have to, you know, take on the cost of getting to my office. And I don't think that my employer, you know, depending again on where you work, is paying for you to get to work. I mean, if you're here, and then your job entails you going around the city for different things, that's one thing, that's part of your job. But I don't think that with taxpayer dollars, particularly as we hear people talk about the frustration with $2 for parking and everything else, that we need to be giving people, you know, whatever, their 102 dollars, or whatever it is, to come here and park and work. I understand it's an added benefit, but again, we are dealing with taxpayer dollars. If this was Google, then I'm all for it. But we are a nonprofit trying to make every dollar count. And it's just, you know, for me, hard to justify to someone who's gonna call me in January and say, I don't wanna pay the self-storage fee, or I don't wanna pay the $2 for parking, or X, Y, and Z other fees that they're paying, when I know someone is working in this building for eight hours and getting paid $200 extra for their car.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. We can review the list and make sure that it's appropriate for those that are receiving it, and then also make sure that the policy is in line with those that are receiving it.
Thank you. Okay, lots of lights went off. Clark Reed?
I have a question only for Johanna. I think you were leading the vacant property tax proposal. In, in the budget memos, there are no revenue projections? Do we have, or will we have any revenue projections for that?
We can prepare them. We've, I've just been responding to questions, and it wasn't a, it was not a staff proposal, if you recall.
Okay, and I think that can be one way to make up, instead of taking benefits away from staff members, to make up that, that hole. As well, another question I have is...
I could, I would be hesitant to do that, because I'm not, and I've been slow to rec, or stepped up in, in terms of how we rec, we do this, because it will require more staff time to enforce. So for inspections, those are covering the costs for, for the staff time, and if we identify more vacant buildings, that's more staff time. So I just wanna be...
Can we do this, Johanna? Can we? Because I think there was a whole slide on this. Maybe we could go back to that slide. Maybe you could take us through, because I know lots of people up here, this has been tossed around, this vacant property thing, and I think it would just be decent for us to understand better as a group what we're, what we're talking about here.
Okay, so I think it was at the Saturday meeting, Alderman Simmons suggested we look at a vacant building tax, and other communities like Oakland and New York City, and there's some, several international communities that have looked at a vacant building tax. So in considering that, most of the communities have spent quite a, a large amount of time determining what a vacant building or vacant property is. Is the extra lot next to your home a vacant property? You're not developing it, you're enjoying it as a backyard, is that, but it is vacant, it's not developed. So, but, and there's a potential that's not being realized for that property. So how do you, how do you classify vacant buildings? So our proposal was, right now, let's keep what we have. We do have a vacant building registry. We have defined specifications for what qualifies a vacant building. So let's increase that from $400 to $2,500. And that puts us more in line with other communities like Oakland. And, and I think New York had contemplated a similar fee of, of several thousand dollars for a vacant property. Then the next thing is add a fee for additional inspections. So currently, we have an inspection fee of 500. So add, add additional fees if we're called out for multiple times, depending on the type of property or the condition of the property. Inspectors might have to go out multiple times, and then...
But you're being called, just so I'm clear, you're being called out there because someone's claiming there's a code, some kind of stand, code and standard that's not being met?
There could be a property standard violation. So cut grass, windows broken, and these are property owners that aren't around.
It's not that. I, I own a light industrial building, all right, let's say, and I haven't been able to find a tenant for it.
That's different. If you have, if you're actively marketing and for, looking to sell it or lease it, that's not considered a vacant building.
Okay.
It's if you've just abandoned the property.
So vacant is just abandoned?
Right, there's a, there's a whole list of things. So it's excessive code violations, and, and I should be clear for everyone up here, there's a lot of confusion. Property standards is not in community development. It is in health right now, on January 1st. So I'm just learning.
Do we have a lot of vacant buildings here in Evanston? Is this the problem?
I believe there's about 60 to 70, depending on the season and what we know of.
Okay.
And then, and then increasing the penalties for each violation. So if you get cut grass, and then it's cut grass again, or it's broken windows, or, or other, other, other property standards violations, each, they, they add up. So it's not just, you get to enjoy a $250 violation each time.
Okay. I got, I got several lights up here, so let me, let me go with Alderman, let me go with some of the Alderman, and I'll get back to you, Clark Reed. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thanks. And, and just so, so now I guess I'm, I'm starting to understand this a little bit differently. If we're specifically talking about properties that have fallen into foreclosure or bank-owned, like, just out of experience, those are really hard properties to get complacency on. So if that was the intention of what you're talking about, that would make sense. And I think the opposite is if it's someone's summer home, or whatever the case may be, or they're trying to sell it, it, it doesn't make sense. So if we can be clear, if it's bank-owned property, then I'm all for it, as long as it doesn't impact our residents. Does that make sense?
We're, we, we wouldn't change any of the standards for defining vacant as they are today.
Right.
Do you wanna hear the definition?
Yeah, that might help, thank you.
Okay. Vacant building is defined as a building or portion of a building which is, and then there's various factors, unoccupied and secured, or unoccupied and secured by boarding. C is unoccupied and a dangerous structure, and then there's a definition for that. Next one is unoccupied and condemned by a director. The next one is multiple code violations. The next one after that is unoccupied in a building or premises, has been a site of an unlawful activity within the previous six months. One after that is unoccupied for over 180 days, during which time the director's issued an order to correct public nuisance conditions, and haven't been corrected. And then the last one is more of a catch-all, unoccupied for over two years.
Thank you for that definition. I, can I ask you a quick question? Because you kinda know what my headaches have been over the years with some of these properties. Would something like this help to, I, I mean, I don't, I see it as a revenue generator, but more importantly, bring these banks into compliance and get their attention about doing something about these properties?
Good day. Ike Ogbo, Director, Health and Human Services Department. To answer your question, I think increasing the fee will definitely bring, bring the attention to the matter, to resolve whatever those issues are. I mean, it can be hard getting them to resolve these issues, but I think it would definitely get the attention. I mean, because currently, for registration of properties, it's $500, you know?
Right.
And I think, you know, if we increase that fee, you know, we might have less vacation, vacant properties in Evanston.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, Alderman Ruth Simmons?
It's a new item.
Oh, it's a new item? Let's keep on, let's keep, yeah, let's keep on this one before we move to something else. Let me go to Alderman Wilson.
So I'm generally supportive of a little bit of a fee increase on the registration, but I feel like we should focus more on the violation part. So for example...
Just do both.
You could have three violations, and you're still under the $2,500 registration fee. So that, you know, I guess if you, if you're responsible enough to register, and you keep it compliant, and there are no problems with your property, you know, I don't really wanna hammer somebody for the $2,500. On the other hand, if you've got a bunch of violations, particularly if you're up to three, those penalties, I think, should be more, more significant to, to force the compliance. Does that make sense?
So I think you're saying if, if somebody has a vacant building, they've just registered, they're paying $2,500, and we're not compelling them, but you wanna, you wanna increase that?
No, I don't wanna charge them $2,500 out of the box. I wanna charge them a lot less than that. But if they don't keep up the property, and they have a number of violations, the penalties should be more severe. I'd rather get the money not from compliant property owners who are keeping their property secured, and, you know, generally not a problem. I don't wanna focus on them, I wanna focus on the ones who are non-compliant.
Sure, okay, and then...
That's, that's my personal...
I understand. And then the second point, add fee for additional inspections. So each time we'd have to, particularly with, and I chime in, each of these violations, we have to go back and inspect. Those, we, if we have to keep going back, we would charge for each of those instead of one inspection fee.
I agree with that too, sure.
Can I, over the cost? Can I make a point? So, to Mr. Chairman, to the Alderman's point, a property wouldn't be deemed vacant until it's had those multiple violations, or it's been vacant or unoccupied for over two years. So it wouldn't even meet the vacant criteria until it's already become somewhat of a nuisance property. So you wouldn't be hit with the 25, is the, you just read through the list.
And I think Ike is probably the expert on this one, so feel free to chime in. But my quick reading of the code is that the last one that I read is...
The last criteria for two years.
Catch-all. But the other one, if it's condemned, other reasons can trigger it before the full tier years. Is that... years. Is that right, Ike?
Absolutely. If a vacant property is boarded up, is unsecure, has been unoccupied for two years, has property violations for 180 days or so, that constitutes that property as a vacant property. So, there are these guidelines and these measures by which we declare a property vacant: unsecured, boarded up, dangerous structure, property violations up to 180 days, and if it has not been occupied for two years.
Yeah, so essentially, it's already a nuisance...
Right.
But before it's even determined to be vacant under the code, which is where they'd start paying that $2,500 fine. The catch-all for two years is also, I think, a nuisance, when you have a property that's been sitting vacant for several years, and are not actively trying to lease it or sell it. That creates blight in our neighborhoods, and we wanna make sure that. And in fact, I hope that the council would reduce it from two years to a single year, because I think the problem that we're, you know, it's, in my eyes, it's not just a revenue problem. And one, just as a quick estimate, saying, you said there are about 60 or 70 properties that are currently, meet this definition. So, at the $500 mark, we're currently bringing in $30,000 a year, assuming that it's 60 properties, and it would be $150,000 a year, assuming that it is $2,500 that we would charge. So, that's a net gain for the city of $120,000 a year, if I'm...
I just had one thing to add on to that, because I'm really curious about all this. There's what we charge people, and what we actually get paid. And with these vacant buildings, I wonder if this is just an exercise in futility, like, great, we, let's put it at 50,000, and we can take care of the other, you know, thing, storage tax we just took off. So, give us a sense, too, on that, like, are people paying this stuff? I mean, these are obviously people that have neglected their properties, aren't around here, and we are trying to incentivize them by penalizing them to fix this up.
Right. To a degree, they are paying, but not all. We have about 60 to 65 vacant properties, and of those properties, I will estimate that about 60 to 70 percent of them have paid. But I can provide a report to specify those property owners who've actually paid. But for the other 30 percent, it's just one of those things where we monitor those properties, we board those properties, and also, that's one of the reasons we receive a grant from the Illinois Housing Authority in order to monitor these properties, cut the grass. If there's any pest control that needs to be done on the properties, we do that, we board up the homes, and, you know, we put fences around the homes as well. So, the $75,000 that we get every two years from the Illinois Housing Authority actually helps us for those who have not registered their properties.
Thank you. I wanna start to quickly move through here. I mean, I don't know, I think there's gonna be more research that we want done. Is that okay? Or you wanna keep this going on this item? All right, I'm gonna move, all right, I'm moving on. All right, Alderman, I know Rue Simmons, you're on a different topic. Fleming, are you on a different topic?
I have one question.
Okay, great. So, there seems like there's a general consensus up here, just based on the questions, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we'd like the city manager's office to now, you know...
Look into it.
Look into this, based on the conversation that you heard here tonight. Look at those, you know, fines, all that. But give us a realistic, if we were to make an adjustment there, what that revenue might be.
Yeah, I think we have sufficient direction. Thank you for the conversation. We'll come back with some revisions on that. And just noting the time, it's about 5 to 11. I did wanna note that we have a budget meeting a week from today, specifically on the budget, after we do the first hour of equity training. So, I anticipate we'll have continued robust discussion then. But if the council is in agreement, I'm suggesting we go maybe 10 more minutes, so we do have an exact session that we need to get to as well, so.
All right.
Okay.
Let's see, let's see how talk everybody is here. We got Alderman Rue Simmons, and then Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. I would like us to move forward with designating the sales tax revenue from the recreational marijuana use to fund our reparation policy that we have committed to work towards.
So, just so I'm clear, your suggestion is that the money from cannabis would be put into a reparations fund?
Yes.
And then the second part of that would be later on, as the council figures out how to allocate or invest that money?
Exactly. So, we're still working on the initiatives, and we're being very careful to think about those that will have impact, that will actually make a substantial and measurable difference. So, we don't have, we don't have those answers yet, but we're gonna be working with experts and our own staff and our own city council to come up with those initiatives. But since we've made the commitment, if we could set aside the funds now to fund that work, that would be in line with what we stated we are in support of.
Okay, all right. Stay on that, stay on this topic right now. Is there other thoughts on this? Or people like, you know, like this idea, you wanna chime in on that, so we can give some direction, again, to the city manager's office on that. Alderman Braithwaite?
I like the idea, I guess, that I didn't sit in on the, on your meeting, just to put some caps or targets. You know what I mean? I just want a little bit of meat on the bone. So, if we're, it's a good tax to, because I don't feel like it's gonna take away from anything else that we've discussed this evening, but either a target number?
We're gonna limit it at 10 million.
Okay, there we go. And over what period of time? So, just to grow it to...
10 years.
That would be great.
Actually, that is something, I mean, we've been working really hard on this, and that's something impossible to say right now.
Sure.
It's just that we want to get the cannabis tax in the category only of the reparations programs.
Yes.
And we're working on putting together a program to present to the council and to the community, which we can't do yet, because we want to do it right, and we're working on it. So, we have segments that we're all working on. We're working on the program, we're working on the demographics, we're working on, you know, all segments. But one of the most important segments is to reserve the funding. And since this funding is pure, and nobody's attached to it, and the development of the legislation is so uniquely towards minorities and towards people who have been harmed the most, this seemed so appropriate. And, you know, there is this issue with it being, not coming back to the communities until September 1st, because of this, I guess you could call it, screw-up. However, we've talked to Kelly Cassidy, and the meetings that they're having now, the, what do you call it?
The veto session.
The veto session. They're amending it to reimburse the communities beginning in January. That is the plan. And we've told her that we are targeting, we're asking the council to target our money, and she's so impressed. To reparations, we told her we don't have, we haven't voted on it or anything, but that would be our plan.
Okay.
And that was really impressive.
Sorry to jump in there. We've got 10 more minutes of tape left, or then we're gonna have to break, just to come back here. So, I'd like to get the, like, no, that's okay.
We just wanted to get that in.
So, is there a general feeling here among folks? It seems like, it seems like there is, that we would take the cannabis revenue that is generated and put it into a reparations fund. So, right now, in our budget for this next year, we've got $250,000, an estimate?
That's correct.
Okay. And put that in, and then the council can have a conversation later about, you know, are you putting an overall, is it always gonna be that way? Are you putting an overall cap? Is it, we're gonna use this money up to 10 million, or whatever? But we could have that conversation later. But for right now, for the direction for the city manager's office, to take that $250 and say, "We wanna create a new fund called the reparations fund."
Yes.
That's our request.
Yeah, wanna be careful not to put in language, "limit it to $250," but to, okay. All of it. Right, 100 percent.
Yeah, my understanding is that the suggestion is that we move, or we designate cannabis tax, which will be on the agenda next week, to be taxed at a rate of 3%. So, we put cannabis tax into a reparations fund in perpetuity until it reaches $10 million, and then we would come back to the council and reallocate future tax for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
But there were...
Does it get that in any other way?
And again, I mean, based on what you just said, so, we would, you're saying, okay, we're gonna set aside the first $10 million that's generated in cannabis tax revenue into the reparations fund, and beyond that, then that money goes into the general fund?
Correct. That's my understanding.
All right. But that'll all come back to, presuming if we were to set that all up, it's more than just this conversation right here, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so we'll get to see that. But that's a general direction.
That's the vision.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question in that, in the same category?
Really quick, yep.
The current medical cannabis tax, you, how much does that bring in?
It's around $50,000 a year.
Can we pull that as well, or is that allocated elsewhere right now?
Well, we don't have enough time, but we can talk about that, because we had another plan.
Yep, yep. Okay. Is there any other important topic related to taxes, expenses, people wanna talk about with the budget right now? Okay? All right. Then, can I do a quick round of call all the wards? We'll start with Alderman Ravel.
I'd like to make a referral to the Rules Committee. So, we've had an extensive discussion in the Rules Committee about how we were gonna, how much time we're gonna allow to, allot to public comment at our standing committee meetings, and we decided that we would allot 45 minutes to planning and development, and a maximum of two minutes per speaker. What we didn't talk about in Rules was sort of the format for how that public comment might be handled, and I think it would be helpful to both members of the public, as well as those of us who, you know, we rotate in and out of being the chair, to have some guidelines about, you know, should the residents be able to, out of that 45 minutes, for example, be able to say, you know, "We want five minutes of that," or "10 minutes of that 45 minutes to go to a special presentation," or something? I think the residents felt pretty stressed to try to make their comments in an sociological format in just two minutes at a go. So, I would like the Rules Committee to discuss this again, this part of public comment again.
Okay. We'll get that on there. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
No, we'll be cool.
Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I have a referral, I guess, for APW. So, just in looking at the bills list, there's usually some payment for some kind of meal, whether it's staff meeting or whatever. So, just wanted to see if we have a policy, and kind of what each department spends, and some more information about how we decide what meetings we're buying meals for. I know we tend to have food leftover from city council. Also, and along those same lines, I had a conversation with this interim city manager about some staff increases that happened under our previous administration, which brings me to the concern just about how we spend taxpayer dollars. So, I would like us to, I know this interim city manager's working on some new policies around staff increases, so I would like to have a conversation about that, APW, as well as just looking at where those last staff increases went.
When you say staff, you mean compensation increases?
Compensation, yes.
Okay. All right.
Is that listed publicly anywhere? So, if I looked at the website, would I be able to see the position?
No, that is the problem.
Okay.
So, I guess the interim city manager can send you those.
All right.
I would like some clarity on this. This sounds like a management decision, not a policy decision, so I'm wondering if you could clarify...
Well, and so, that's my concern. So, I know that, you know, that in the city manager's position, there is some discretion, and, you know, and HR has some discretion, but when we have, you know, when they're, I would like to understand what the policy is. So, when we're gonna give a staff an increase, it's not like your yearly salary bonus, or, you know, anything like that, that's a kind of more standard, either in the union, or just, like, this year, we're giving non-unionized staff an increase, and it's in the budget. When there are increases that are made that are not in the budget, I would like some information about. I guess I wanna see how those are decided, but more so what our policy's gonna be moving forward.
Okay.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Everyone that planned on attending the Thursday, what is that, the 14th? To encourage them to attend Mayor's...
Oh, to the Mayor's Town Hall is, yep. This Thursday, 7:00 p.m., temperance in your ward.
Here in budget, and anything else.
We'll talk budget or anything people wanna talk about.
There you go. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson? All right. Alderman Rue Simmons?
We're meeting this Wednesday. Hope to see you there.
Alderman Suffertin?
I'd like to make a referral to the Rules Committee about whatever that Lumineers thing at the top of the meeting was. I don't think we should be doing playlists at the start of meetings, and then complaining about them going until 11 o'clock. I'd also like to make a referral to the Rules Committee about the use of the mayor's name for taxpayer-funded programs, Mayor Hagerty's holiday food drive. We should have a discussion about that, too, because you're not paying for it, taxpayers are.
Thank you. All right. And for the record, it's always been whoever the mayor is at the time, so, happens to be. I'm the mayor now, when it was mayor...
Let's talk about the Rules Committee. Let's do that, then. Thank you, sir.
I move pursuant to 5 ILCS, that she's ILCS 120/2A, that the city council convene